I'm not sure it's green, but it doesn't look like there's a light. The lights don't work. Okay. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Sacramento City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenier, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here. All right, welcome to everybody. We have a very robust afternoon agenda. And I would like to begin with the pledge of allegiance. If we might all rise, ask Councilmember Jennings if he would please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to see a full chamber here this afternoon. If I may suggest how we might proceed this afternoon. We have the consent calendar, and then we have a number of public hearings. And because most people, I believe, are here for the item number 23 related to tenant protection, I would like to move that as the first item before the public hearings, after the consent calendar, if there is no objection to that. So now we get to the consent calendar itself. And I know I have some comments on the consent calendar, but I think the appropriate thing is first to ask if any members have any changes to the consent calendar, and then if not, to hear the public testimony. And then I will make my comment, and other members may make their comments as well. Okay? Very good. Ms. Cappy?
So I do have Councilmember Warren recusing on item 17 on consent, and I have eight people to sign up to speak.
Moved and seconded.
So my first speaker is Craig Powell on item 7. Second speaker is Mac Worthy on 12, 16, and 19. And then Andy Hernandez on item 17.
Good afternoon. I'm Craig Powell.
Welcome.
I'm the president of ION Sacramento. And item 7 has to do with a dissolution of the streetcar community financing district. And this was a consequence of a court ruling where we and some other folks got together to seek to invalidate the streetcar tax. And the court did rule that the city's imposition of the streetcar tax was illegal for a number of reasons. One was they gerrymandered the district by cherry picking the voters. They gave predominant voting power to a property owner who didn't even, wasn't even going to pay any of the tax. They also, keep in mind, the voters and the residents in this district had previously voted this tax down by overwhelming margin. So I'm hoping that the city takes a lesson from this and is more careful about, in the future, about stripping residents of their right to vote on tax increases. I certainly hope that is the case. We're able to enter a settlement with the city on this. And today, we'll essentially finalize that settlement by the ending of this streetcar community financing district. So hopefully, it's the beginning of a new chapter in future tax acts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell.
Next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Andy Hernandez, then Angela James.
Excuse me? Yeah, it's not, it's hard for us even to hear up here. We understand. We're trying to fix the sound system. Sure, thank you. Hold on, Mr. Worthy, if you would, just a minute while we... I love the old system.
Go ahead, Mr. Worthy.
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Worthy. As soon as you're ready, I'll start your timer.
Put it back at two minutes.
That's where it's at, Mr. Worthy. Now it's a minute fifty-seven. Go ahead.
Training. We have seen altering the training of emergency vehicle people. That's been in black and white for the past forty years already. Why do you keep altering? That's your oversight garbage. Now, when we look at the oversight, the oversight of altering your police training, we got two people killed here. The car boy got killed on misuse. The little girl in there, I said, hey, those are simple protocols when you go to the domestic court. Those are simple, but you got people killed. Now, when we look at a sixteen sewer combined, people, it's pitiful. Let Britney M. control that, because y'all know nothing about no sewer. Only one thing carries sewer, and that's the easement. Other things are draining. Go, people, how it stink. Do you realize how those places stink with dead rats and everything up in it? That's what you need to go and do. Now, when we look at the theater. Now, due to an investigation in Elk Grove, we had a man said that he put up $500,000 for him and his wife's name on the theater. Is that facts or is that a lie? Now, that guy got nine million dollars in Elk Grove for development that he don't even have to pay back. The same thing, a $500,000 came here when you started to step forward. Anonymous, be careful with anonymous money. Because I beg the people in the Republican Party, Trump keeps draining the swamp. We want to know more about that anonymous money. Where going and how much is misuse?
Next speaker is Andy Hernandez on 17. Angela James on 17, and then Pat Sayer-Handley, also 17.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Again, I'm sorry, Eddie, not to interrupt you. Let's keep the, two minutes, just, it's hard to hear.
Oh, yeah. It'll be quick.
No, take...
My comments are, thank you. We, our, this is a critical facility for both our community and South Sacramento. And I appreciate the investment you're making, and I'm excited to be a part of the team to expand and improve it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Angela James. Is Angela James here? Okay. Next is Pat Sayer-Handley.
Pat.
And Rick Eaton. Following Rick Eaton is Ed Perez.
It's my pleasure to be here to thank you for this item on the agenda. We're terribly thrilled at our friends, our tots. Are excited about the big place they have there reading. We're excited about finally getting a place for elementary school kids. Right now, we have nothing. We're very excited for our teams, who are working diligently for Taste of North Sacramento. They're super excited about learning about businesses and serving food at the Taste of North Sac. We have a number of homeless that will now have more space to sort their stuff than you use the library. We also have many families, and we're very excited about having some space for seniors. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is, next speaker is Rick Eaton, then Ed Perez, then Kevin Fiera.
I go away for a couple weeks and...
I feel like I'm at a movie theater or something. My name is Rick Eaton. I'm here with the North Sacramento Community Development Corporation just to express our gratitude for the support for the North Sacramento library expansion. We think this is a wonderful project that will bring not only additional library services, but economic stimulus to an area that definitely needs it. It's an innovative public-private partnership. And so just really want to express our support to see this project move along. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have other?
Ed Perez and Kevin Fiera are our final two speakers on consent.
Okay, which item?
Item eighteen for both.
Eighteen, yes. Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. It's a great day in Sacramento, and some of you may have read the Comstock magazine article that talked about the rail yards and the fact that that project is moving full steam ahead. And I think, in a way, that kind of describes what's happening in our great city. We have the convention center project. We have the community theater project. And I'm gratified to see that finally the Norton Thomas Community Center and Aquatic Complex project is also on the consent calendar for final action. It's a long overdue project and something that the residents of Norton Thomas have been really looking forward to. And even on the socioeconomic front, I see that we might see some housing relief on the agenda as well. So again, great day for the city, and I want to thank the council for the action today. Thank you.
Our last speaker on consent is Kevin Fiera on item eighteen.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. Kevin Ferrer, executive director of the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council. Just wanted to say that the building trades strongly supports the aquatic center in the Thomas. This will be an economic generator just after it's built, but it also will create jobs into the constructing industry through the building trades as well. And so our members are up and ready for this thing to break ground. So we ask for your strong support of this, of this item, the aquatic center. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Kevin. That's the public testimony. I'd like to begin by making a few public comments and then turn it over to my colleagues. This is a great day for Sacramento because contained within this consent calendar are three very, very important projects. Councilmember Ashby, of course, has fought hard and has brought forward the aquatic center project. I have, working with councilmembers Warren, I know is recused on this, but his, he and his constituents and Councilmember Carr, I've brought forward the two library projects. And for me, and I hope for the community, these three votes here express the promise, the promise of Measure U that the voters passed last November with a promise that we would invest in our neighborhoods. Regarding the aquatic center, I know that there has been a lot of back and forth, and I want to say the following. First of all, I 100% support the project. The project, in my view, is not absolutely ready back in May, but a few significant things have happened since then. We have a guaranteed maximum price locked in. The Norton Thomas Unified School District has committed 10.6 million to close the funding gap. And most importantly, we passed a city budget that commits us to 40 million annually for inclusive economic development and a $125 million bond that helps allow us to make commitments to big projects like this. This project will be a citywide amenity. And I want to congratulate my colleague, Councilmember Ashby, for fighting so hard and delivering really important work on this. I want to thank the Norton Thomas district for stepping up as well. And I want to thank the building trades for always pushing projects that help create more employment and especially high-wage employment for working men and women. $14.4 million is a big city commitment, and I am fully committed to making the same magnitude of investments in all your districts as well as with a specific focus on areas that have been left behind for decades. And that's why it's not coincidental that the two library projects are on this same agenda. Because even though it is the beginning, I think it is very important that today we express our intent to spend up to $5 million approximately apiece for a new North Sacramento library and to renovate and expand the Martin Luther King Library, which hasn't been renovated or expanded since the year 2000, almost 20 years. These projects now need to be fully scoped and fleshed out, but we will come back with final approval for these projects as quickly as we can. Finally, I know Councilmember Chenier is going to speak in a moment about some of his concerns about the process. I do think the, call it a little messiness over the last couple months does lead to one important message that I would reiterate to the city management and the city staff. It is essential that you come back to us with recommendations around metrics, around evaluate, around how projects, around Measure U are going to be evaluated going forward so that we are all understanding and working together in a way that allows there to be some even greater transparency going forward around these new dollars. It's essential, we've talked about this, you come forward in the fall, early in the fall, with a program and with your best ideas about how we're going to evaluate projects and how we're going to evaluate impacts on our respective communities and on our city. So, great work, Councilmember Ashby and Councilmembers Carr and Warren, and all the members of the community that have come out here today. It's a good day for Sacramento. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Ashby. I'm not sure what, this one?
That's okay, got it, mayor. Thank you, mayor.
Okay.
I always hate talking about things before the actual consent vote is taken. So that's always a little struggle for me. I want it to be vote and then talk about it. But there are two items on here that I feel I want to comment on, too. First of all, is item 17, which is the two libraries. I've had the opportunity to work with the mayor's staff in particular on the North SAC library branch because you won't hear Councilmember Warren talk about it. He cannot. He is recused. He owns land nearby. And quite some time ago, he asked the mayor and I to step in and try to help. And I'm really grateful that this item is on the agenda for tonight because it gives us the planning dollars to start moving forward, and it adds the MLK Library in District Eight to those planning dollars. And that is a very significant step for us. So hopefully, in short order, we'll be right back at this dais, moving forward on both projects and getting those improvements made. I've been on the library authority board since the first day I stepped into this building, and I think there are very few things that bring a bigger infusion of community into neighborhoods than the library. It really is a space for everyone. It really is a focus on education and equity. And in today's day and age, it is the one place where the internet is free for everyone. Go do a job search there. Go do your homework there. You can get homework help. And in places like Martin Luther King Boulevard and North SAC Del Paso Heights, those are really important equity issues. And so when we talk about bringing equity to communities, I think libraries have to be somewhere near the top of that list in how we do it. So it is a great day in terms of item 17, and I'm honored and privileged to be any small part of moving that forward, Councilmember Warren. So thank you for that opportunity. And then obviously, item 18 is something that I have fought hard for, for probably about five years. If you see the gray hairs on my head, they weren't here five years ago. They, they, they are directly correlated to maybe this project, at least in part. And I just think it's really important in a city with two rivers that everybody has an opportunity to learn how to swim. And I also think it's important where there's a community like Norton Thomas that can give more, that when we create a community amenity, that we do it in a way that it serves the whole city. So this isn't a pool for Norton Thomas. This is an aquatic facility for Sacramento. This is the first Olympic-sized pool. It's for everyone. Any of you that have kids that swim swim meets or swim teams have to leave the city of Sacramento to do it, and that will be no longer after this. So I'm excited about that. I'm, I'm very grateful to all of the partners. But you don't do anything from a council seat alone, and I appreciate the mayor giving me credit. But it takes five votes to do anything up here. And I, there would be not, this wouldn't be happening, and it wouldn't be on the consent, and it wouldn't be moving forward without all of the people to my left. They all had to participate for this to come along. So I'm incredibly grateful to every one of my colleagues on the dais, mayor, everybody. And then, of course, my community that came out so strong to help me illustrate the point here. And it is a project labor agreement, which means everyone working on the project will be union. And one of the ways that we were able to make this project work is that Kevin Ferrer was involved from the very beginning. So over a year ago, he was involved in the discussions to help us keep the prices on target. Norton Thomas Unified, which is the smallest school district in the city, is putting up $10 million for this project. So lots of partnerships here. The community of Norton Thomas is putting up 20 million. And today, hopefully in a few minutes, the city of Sacramento will close the gap with the last 14 million. And I just want to say to my colleagues, thank you. Thanks for hearing me out. Thanks for hearing my community out. I know you guys took calls and emails, and I, I really appreciate you, every single one of you. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Very good. All right, we move now to Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I just want to correct one thing in the agenda on item 17. It's got districts Five and Eight. It's actually Two and Eight for the two libraries that are there, unless you want to move another library into my district, which we can talk about at some time as well. I want to talk just for a minute, and I'll be brief, about the aquatic center, which is item 18, obviously. And I want to congratulate Councilmember Ashby for her hard work over a long period of time on this. The way I understand the funding for this, and the funding has morphed since day one because of rising costs and various other things. And to be clear, is that there will be a loan from the water fund. The loan will be repaid first and foremost by excess general funds at the end of the fiscal year 19, if there is not enough money there. And if we sell bond funds resulting from Measure U, that that will be the second tranche. If we don't sell those bond funds and there's still a need, then it will come from the general fund in 2021. That's my understanding, more or less. So I raised some objections prior with respect to projects being funded by Measure U, particularly at this level, not going through the Measure U Community Advisory Committee to have some context on that. I'm going to be consistent on that. I'm just going to stay off of this vote, if I can, so you can do an abstain as we go just on this item, in deference to Member Ashby. I know she's worked really hard on this. But I do think, and Mr. City Manager, I think sooner rather than later, we need to understand both the metrics that the mayor was talking about and the process for how we move projects. I have four or five projects. I've been telling people, both in my community and some other communities that I've gotten calls from, that there is a process that we're setting up and that all projects will need to go through that. So I hope that that can come back to us fairly quickly. Again, Mr. Jasso's time was October. I'm hoping we can push the workshop up into September. There is a lot of, there are a lot of anxious people in this community who really want to see, make this happen. And I think the pressure on us, rightly so, is to get this process down so we can move forward. But I know Mr. Hanson and I have a difference of opinion on city facilities. I think everything that we do through Measure U should come through both the Investment Committee that we set up and then the Community Advisory Committee. That's why we set them up. That's a discussion for another day, but I hope that day comes sooner rather than later. So on this item, again, I want to congratulate Member Ashby. I think she's done a great job pushing on this for a long time. I'm just going to stay off this vote, just that item.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Councilwoman Ashby, I also want to thank you for your diligence on this over a period of five-plus years. What's important to me is that this is viewed as a citywide amenity. This is not a Norton Thomas-specific project, that this is open to every member of the community of Sacramento broadly speaking. And in the staff report, there's discussion of an equity plan. So I want to make sure that that happens. But other than that, I think it's a good project that benefits the entire community, and so I've been in favor of it. The other thing I wanted to say is, in the public testimony, a gentleman spoke about the rail yards and potential development that's happening there in District Three. It is, in fact, very exciting. The new Superior Court will hopefully break ground this November. So that will be a major half-billion-dollar structure that may be one of the first things to go vertical in the rail yards. And of course, we still have a very enticing prospect of MLS coming to the rail yards as well. And that seems to be moving along. It's a process, but it's moving, and that's a great thing, too. Also, Township Nine is about to get going after a five-year hiatus and bankruptcy. All of these things taken together will create, I think, a real renaissance in the river district and the rail yards that is going to reflect very positively on the city of Sacramento. So to the gentleman who spoke to that issue, I appreciate it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, mayor. I get lots of calls and letters on this issue, Councilmember Ashby, a lot. And not many of them are favorable. Mainly, they kind of go in two directions. One, how can you approve, how can you vote for $14 million to a prosperous community coming out of Measure U funds when that was supposed to be for disadvantaged communities? And the second set of calls are, what's this Measure U process? Weren't all of these supposed to go through Measure U? How are you taking this one off? So this, despite the calls, it's been an easy vote for me, but it's a controversial vote because you have to explain to people, and it's hard to explain to everyone so they get it. And what I tell them is that the council member has accumulated funds that were only, could only be used in her community. And that was most of the money for it. The second set of funds are coming from the Norton Thomas School District. And that money is time-sensitive and will go away unless we act. And that's the reason why we have to act. And the third reason is that because you've accumulated 70% of the dollars, if the council kicks in the other 14 million, we will have a first-class aquatic facility for the whole city. And I promised all the other council members, if they come forward with a project where they have accumulated 70% of the dollars, I think that's one we have to consider very seriously. So that's why we're taking it out of cycle. That's why I'm voting for it. And everything, to me, will depend, and you agree as well as the city staff, that it's very important that we get the terms of use right so that it is an amenity for the whole city. I appreciate the library projects. I was willing to wait until the Measure U committee went through the committee, but I'll vote for it now because I like it now.
I was, I was not willing to wait, so...
And when I mentioned it to you, mayor, that that was a top priority, I really appreciate that you took the initiative to put it on.
Larry, you and I always agree.
Almost always. And just to mention one more thing that, about this underserved communities or underprivileged communities. It's not noticed very much, but we made a significant effort to upgrade our code enforcement and upgrade our 3-1-1 system in this last budget. And those don't serve District One. They don't serve District Seven a little bit. For the most part, they serve underserved communities. We added more staff, more code enforcement officers so we can remove abandoned vehicles, remove junk off the street, really clean up our neighborhoods. And that's a significant amount of investment in our city that I think is going unnoticed. And I think we're going to see the results of that very, very soon. It takes about six months to train a 3-1-1 operator. But we're going to start seeing the results of that very soon by how fast we can pick things up and remove things. I see you looking at your watch, Steve. I'm done. I'm done.
Very good. Thank you, members. Okay, we do have a vote on the consent. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Chenier has indicated his one difference in terms of the vote tally. So let's say all in favor, then. Please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. The abstention will be noted on the one item. The measures all pass. Thank you all very much.
And for the record, Councilmember Warren recused.
And Councilmember Warren recused on?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, maybe we should stop there. Okay, as I said earlier, without objection, we're going to just move the agenda around just a little bit here. Thank you. And congrats to the Safe Credit Union folks who are here today for, again, I know that was on consent, for stepping up big time on behalf of our city and our region, and we're proud to be associated with you. Thank you. Okay. Take care, everybody. All right, so we're going to take item 23 now without objection. Mr. Jasso, present. I'm going to make a brief comment. I know Councilmember Hanson wants to make a brief comment. And then let me, let me tell you the way I would like to do this. I would like to do an hour, I think, an hour for each side of this. I'm not sure how much opposition is here, but I think a maximum of an hour from each side will, will, will work. And then again, I'm open to this, and I know we don't like to go on the fly here, but there's 27 in favor, 37 opposed. We should be able to do an hour apiece, all right? I would encourage people to limit themselves to one minute if you're sayable. Just pack it all in, Jim. Okay? Mr. Jasso?
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and members of the council. Before each day for consideration and action is the Tenant Protection and Relief Act, or TPRA for short. Vice Mayor Guerra and councilmembers Hanson and Jennings are recommending that the city council adopt the Tenant Protection and Relief Act, which is intended to prevent... council adopt the Tenant Protection and Relief Act, which is intended to prevent rent gouging by limiting annual rent increases and provides protection for eviction for long-term tenants. Over the past year, the city council has explored different means to address significant increases in rent levels. To give some context, Sacramento is one of the fastest-growing cities in the state, and construction of new rental units has not kept pace with the demand. In 2017, the median rent increased by 8.2%, the highest in the nation for a metropolitan area, and over 50% of our renters pay more than 30% of their income on housing. When renters are displaced due to excessive rent increases, studies show a corresponding increase in the number of people experiencing homelessness. At the same time, many landlords legitimately have increasing costs to maintain, operate, and develop or rehabilitate rental units. The proposed T-P-R-A strikes a balance between tenant and landlord interests by limiting the program to only rental units, thus excluding single-family homes built before February the 1st, 1995, per the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act. Our Community Development Department, through data collected as part of the Rental Housing Inspection Program, preliminarily estimates about 42,500 units on roughly 7,000 parcels within the city would be subject to the T-P-R-A. The major provisions of the T-P-R-A areas follows. The rent cannot be increased more than once in a 12-month period. The rent increase cannot exceed 6% plus the change in the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. Currently, the CPI change for 2019 is 2.5%, so the rent increases limit, the rent increase limit as of the ordinance's effective date is 8.5%. The ordinance imposes a maximum of 10% kind of limit unless the landlord obtains approval for a higher rent rate or a fair rate of return. The landlord can set the initial rent level for the new tenant. The landlord can increase the rent higher than the 6% plus CPI limit if an independent hearing examiner authorizes the higher rent increase. The landlord must file a petition with the city with documentation to support the increase. The hearing examiner has to make the decision based on the facts presented, of course, subject to the provisions of this ordinance. Once a tenant has resided in the rental unit for more than 12 months, the landlord must offer to renew a rental housing agreement and cannot terminate the rental agreement and require the tenant to move out unless the tenant has violated the terms of the agreement. Landlords will be required to pay the city an annual fee for the cost of implementing the ordinance. The fee amount has not yet been established, but we expect to bring that forth within the next 30 days. City staff can impose administrative penalties against landlords for violation of the ordinance. The TPR effective date is 60 days after enactment. More time will be needed to hire staff, develop program guidelines, and hearing procedures before the ordinance can be implemented. Aligning with their work in enforcing the Rental Housing Inspection Program, the Community Development Department Code Compliance Division will develop a rental rent registry and administer the Tenant Protection and Relief Act. Complaints will be fielded by staff with the expectation of a quick response, and administrative penalties can be imposed for violations. Landlord and tenant petitions would be heard by an independent hearing examiner. It's the intent of the city manager through the Community Development Department to return in September for the approval of program fees and staffing. This would include, but not be limited to, the request to amend the FY '20 operating revenue budget, add a likely minimum of three FTEs, and augment the code division budget by $100,000 for an agreement with self-help housing for outreach and tenant advocacy assistance. Additionally, over the next 60 days, we would expect to begin formal outreach to landlords, tenants, and other stakeholders, collaborate with self-help housing on outreach with the city attorney, city attorney's office to release a request for proposals for hearing examiners, establish a registry database, establish a hearing process for landlords and tenant petitions, and finalize program policies, procedures, and related forms. The ordinance would sunset on December 31, 2024. However, before the ordinance expires, council would review a staff report on housing affordability and availability to determine if the sunset date should be extended. Finally, I have two technical corrections to read into the record. On page two of the ordinance, under 5.156.020 definitions, please replace the word "is" with "maybe" under the definition of annual rent adjustment to read. Annual rent adjustment means the percentage by which the rent for an existing tenancy in a rental unit may be increased within a 12-month period. And number two, on page four, under 5.156.050, annual rent adjustment, notice of rent increase. Insert the word "maximum" before annual rent adjustment to read. The maximum annual rent adjustment is 6% plus the percentage of the annual increase in the cost of living adjustment, if any, but not to exceed a combined total of 10%. And with that, I complete my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Mr. Jasso, very thorough presentation. I just want to make a couple opening comments, turn it over to Councilmember Hanson, neither Councilmember Geta or Jennings, if they choose, to sort of frame this. We're going to listen, of course, to the public testimony and be open, but I wanted to just say from the outset, this is an outstanding piece of work, and if it were easy, it would have happened a long time ago. I'm going to steal a line from Councilmember Hanson that he said to me privately, which is that the city council, and in fact, I think it's true of all governmental bodies, works best when it works together. And this is really the epitome of the process, I want to talk about the substance in a moment, but the process of, in a weird way, messy, difficult, in a way, how it should work. Because I know I launched this effort myself about a year and a half ago with the goal of trying to address not only the SEIU initiative, but more importantly, the merits and the substance of the issue where we face a difficult balance. We do not want to disincentivize development of housing in any way, and at the same time, we want to protect vulnerable tenants from being out in the shelters or on the streets. Lord knows, we have a large enough problem already with homelessness and all its attendant consequences. And so we had a lengthy series of discussions and negotiations, and we did not quite get there for a variety of reasons. Enter councilmembers Hanson, Geta, and Jennings, who came up with their own set of proposals, which weren't quite rent regulation or, or tenant protection in terms of protection from eviction directly. They had some very creative ideas. They worked those ideas, ran aground a little bit, okay, all's fair. And then they take the lead, and especially you single out Eric and Rick, and especially you single out Steve Hanson, because then they come around and they successfully negotiate a reasonable anti-rent gouging piece and a real tenant protection. And none of this, from the very beginning to the very end, was easy or is easy, and the fact that it is landing here today, I think with relatively little, or at least less controversy than there was a year and a half ago, is a credit to the advocates, the stakeholders, and the members who put their, you know, elbows to the, to the grindstone here. On the merits, this is really important. We cannot afford to have more fragile people, lower-income people, they're not all fragile, but low-income and fragile people lose their tenancies, period. And we also cannot afford to send a market signal that we do not want more, that we do, that we do not want more development, because we do. If legislation is imperfect, you have found the imperfect middle here that I think does the right thing by people and helps continue to instill confidence in our economy. And I know people who have different opinions on this, and that's fine, but this is good work. And so I want to say that from the very beginning and turn it over to Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I always learned that letting you go first has its dangers and perils, but thank you for the
Sorry.
The nice words.
Get to be the mayor.
Yes, you are the mayor. We have not forgotten that.
Thank you.
I, I just first want to say that today has taken a tremendous amount of work by many of the people in the room who will not necessarily have the chance to be sung as heroes, but I want to take an old adage, which is that, you know, victory has a thousand parents and failures an orphan, and say that this particular moment is brought to you by three amazing women who have helped us through very, four amazing women, work through a lot of questions and details. I, I've joked that I know more about this than I want to, but not as much as I should, because the complexity of the details really do matter, and that's something that's come up again and again, is that the details on these things really matter tremendously because they impact people's lives in the stability in their residences, whether it's to prevent egregious rent increases, or if it's to make sure that people aren't fairly, unfairly evicted, and that we prevent some of the unintended consequences the mayor might have spoke about, which is to either harm our ability to create new housing, or it's, you know, simply an unintended impact on a particular situation. There's so many situations, but particularly, you know, Mayor, I'll thank you, you're not one of the mothers, but you are one of the people who helped us get here. And Margarita Maldonado, Michelle Paris at Omega Brewer, and Sarah, who works for SEIU, worked tremendously over hours and hours and hours over the past few months since we were here on April 23, and we committed to engaging in a very deep, difficult process. And I know, because I can hear people chitter-chattering out there waiting to say their piece, that not everybody's going to be happy with this. And this, though, is a work in progress. I would also say that if we waited till a ballot measure sometime next year and that fight, we wouldn't be able to help people necessarily right now, but I also know that that, that puts a lot of people's lives in jeopardy as we wait to see what happens there. This will help people fairly immediately. The rent protections go back into Jan, to July 1 as the base rent year. The just cause provisions, the eviction protections here are already vesting as soon as this takes effect, and I think that as we look at how we protect people who are vulnerable, this is the most significant thing that any Central Valley city has done, to stabilize the housing market. It doesn't mean that we haven't done other things or won't continue to do other things, or as we work through this process and implement this ordinance, that there won't be more work to do. But I do think this is a significant achievement that would not be done without the community at large coming together to tell us about, and we heard the testimony here, time and again, 25%, 50% increases. We heard about people getting a 60-day notice for no reason when they've been a great tenant, or even worse, you know, landlords sometimes violating the law to remove a tenant who has been otherwise paid their rent and been a good tenant. And so with the housing shortage, which we have, we've declared a shelter crisis in our city. This acknowledges that production is a long-term goal, but we have to have a short-term response to these problems. And while I know that there will be people who will criticize various details of this or maybe even the larger picture, this is a significant opportunity to help tens of thousands of families know that they're safe in their housing, that they're stable in their housing, and I want to give a lot of credit to the people who worked through these difficult questions with us and to my colleagues, Rick, Eric, Mayor. The Brown Act prevents us all from working together outside of a session like this, so the four of us did a lot of work to make sure that we could bring this home today. And assuming that we have a victory, I just want to say thank you to everybody. And Matt Reed from my team also just did a tremendous amount of work. In the midst of he and his wife having a baby, continued to be a solid stalwart of this effort, so thank you, thank you all. I, I will say, just for the sake of argument, I'll make a motion that we approve this item. I'll also make a motion that city staff continue the implementation work, but as you do that and you're coming back in 30 days with the, some of the implementation roles, that for the hearing program, we really want standards in there, that it's a five-days notice and a 15-day to resolve any, any challenge, whether it's an inappropriate rent increase or unfair eviction, so that we know that the tenants have some certainty fairly quickly about what's going to happen, as well as the landlords.
That's been moved and seconded. All right. Do you want to make councilmembers Geta and Jennings some opening remarks, or do you want to wait for the public testimony?
We'll wait for the public again. I think Councilmember Hanson has some other remarks.
You had some other remarks after that. Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Let us begin with the support. I suppose we should have a third category, which is abject neutrality, but probably not necessary. Okay. So, so let's begin with the support, and again, we're going to take up to an hour. It is 10 minutes to three, and we will go from there. Two minutes apiece with major brownie points for staying to one minute. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A selfie with the mayor. How about that? Okay. There we go.
I'd like to remind the audience so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules and procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website, copies at the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. A cordless microphone, assisted listening device, and parking validations are available from the clerk at the front of the room. As the mayor said, I have 27 speakers in favor of the item. First is Yvonne Walker, then Rose Domingo, then Margarita Maldonado, and then Michelle
Welcome, Yvonne. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. And I want to start out by saying I urge an "I" vote on the measure. Sometimes we get to talk and we forgot to say, we want you to vote "I." So my name is Yvonne Walker, and I'm the proud president of 96,000 SEIU Local 1,000 California state workers, over a third of which I represent live in this area, so this has a huge impact. I will tell you, my blue-sky vision for California is to eliminate poverty, right? We just had a major rally at the Capitol where we had tens of thousands, Local 1,000 members rallying for a California for all and wanting to have this vision. We know that we can't address poverty if we do not tackle the challenge of providing affordable housing for all Sacramento residents. Housing for Sacramento has been on this journey with the Sacramento City Council for nearly three years. I just want to tell you, our members are renters in Sacramento. They are concerned about the environment and being able to live close to work. They care about rising homelessness and their neighbors' suffering that comes with it, and their own suffering, as some of them have been priced out and forced to live in their cars. We began this journey with the belief that housing is a human right, and just because you are a renter, you should not have to face being displaced from your home, your neighborhood, or your kids from their school. Renting should not mean living in deplorable housing conditions because advocating for something better means losing the roof over your head. We appreciate, I appreciate Mayor Steinberg, who I've been in partnership for a very long time, and Councilmember Margaera, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Jennings, all of you. We realize that sometimes as we're working on issues and trying to come to
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Can wrap it up. Thank, thank you.
I don't, I don't get a selfie.
You get a selfie. You always get a selfie.
Next speaker is Rose Domingo, then Margarita Maldonado, then Michelle Burgess.
Hello, Mayor Steinberg and councilall members. My name is Rose Domingo. Originally, I was born in the Philippines and raised on the island of Guam, so I come from a tricultural background, and I believe I'm representative of the melting pot here in Sacramento. I, five years ago, I lost my house and began to rent. Back then, my house was, my rent was about $600 a month. Today, the cost, the market value of my home, my apartment to rent it is $1,600, and that's just the base price. That does not include insurance that they require you to pay, that doesn't include the utilities that you are required to pay, and any other fees that are imposed by the landlords. I ask for your support with renter protection. Let's build viable communities for Sacramento. From the island of the Philippines, I From the island of the Philippines, I say "mapuhi." From the island of Guam, I say "half a day." And from Sacramento, I say, "Let's build a strong Sacramento." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then next speaker is Margarita Maldonado, and then Michelle Burgess. And do feel free to line up in the aisle, we do have one hour.
Hi. Good to see all of you and appreciate the leadership that is going on, what's happening today. So, Margarita Maldonado, and one of the proponents of a ballot measure that you know, that we were moving in the city in order to make sure that rent stabilization and just cause protections were put into place. We are happy as proponents and as a coalition that we were able to get to this point here. And the point that we're at today is really putting the renters first and stopping the rent gouging that has been happening in this city. Way too often, we have brought stories forward to the city council that we have been hearing from the different tenants and the conditions that they're living in. There is still a lot of work to do here, because there are still renters that won't be able to use their voice because of whatever their economic situation is. We will still continue to bring those voices and those issues forward, and continue to build the kind of Sacramento that Rose just spoke about, that this is a Sacramento for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Margarita.
Michelle Burgess, then Veronica Beatty.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michelle Burgess, of course, and I am a state worker, and I'm a proud member of SEIU Local 1,000 led by President Yvonne Walker. And I'm here today to talk about my family and how I support written protection. I have a father who is on a fixed income. He can't afford to live by himself. I have a 24-year-old that has a job, but she can't afford to live by herself. We live in District 7, Mr. Jennings. It is very, very expensive for us to live in that district. However, we do it, because we're all in the same home. We need affordable housing, we need rent protection, we need to be able, I need to be able to save money to send my kids to college. Right now, all of my money goes towards housing. More than 50% of my income goes towards housing. I still need to be able to afford to get to work, gas, utilities, things of that nature. I need you to support this action and to support the members of my union and of the state, because we afford, we should be able to afford where we live, and that's here in Sacramento. So I thank you for your time. I kept it under one minute, I want my selfie, Mayor.
You get it. You get it. It's a deal.
And next speaker is Veronica Beatty, then Dave Tanner. Veronica, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Veronica Beatty, Policy Director of the Sacramento Housing Alliance, a member of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition, and a renter in District 4. My rent has increased nearly 40% over the time I've lived in Sacramento. In that time, my apartment complex has reduced services, been unresponsive to maintenance requests, and evicted several of my neighbors for minor peace violations they had no opportunity to cure. Every time I come home, I look to my front door to see if there's a piece of paper tape there letting me know that I'm next. Like the rest of Sacramento, my rent increases have far outpaced the growth of my paycheck. As difficult as it's been for me to come up with an additional $100, $200, $300 more in rent, it's been possible so far. But I know that for many of my neighbors, it hasn't been that easy. Every day, exorbitant rent hikes gouge Sacramentoans, pushing them into homelessness on the streets, in their cars, on their friends' couches. Across Sacramento County, 15 people are evicted each day. I'm here today because Sacramento needs to do something now to ensure that everyone is safely, stably housed in a place they can afford. Today's proposed ordinance is the critical first step in ensuring that. By limiting rent gouging and protecting people from unjust evictions, we move closer to being a city that houses everyone. With the proposed rental housing registry, we can be a city that takes its rental housing crisis seriously, and knows more precisely how the tragedy of displacement takes place in our communities, and more importantly, what we need to do about it. I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica, for all your hard work on this.
Next speaker is Dave Tanner, then Nikia Briscoe.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'm Dave Tanner, CEO of the Sacramento Association of Realtors, representing over 7,000 members. We first want to thank council members Hanson, Jennings, and Gara, as well as the support of Mayor Steinberg in getting us to this place where we are today. Sacramento and communities throughout California are struggling due to a drastic lack of affordable housing. The city of Sacramento has made improvements to permit streamlining, build-by-right, but without a funding stream, getting affordable projects online was difficult. Councilmember Hanson led an effort during the budget process to put $100 million of funding in the budget to provide gap financing for affordable housing projects. This money will infuse new affordable housing developments throughout the city. The new supply is the only real way to improve housing prices and curb rising rents. Because of the council's leadership during the budget process, providing $100 million in gap financing for affordable housing, the Sacramento Association of Realtors is able to support this temporary program for tenant protections and preventing rent gouging. While the association still opposes permanent rent caps and just cause for eviction, we believe this carefully crafted ordinance, providing for a temporary stabilization of rents, will not negatively impact the construction and new supply. We see this as a fair compromise between the housing community and tenant advocates, and for these reasons, we urge the council to support this temporary ordinance today.
Thank you to you and your, and your association for its good work as well. Thank you.
Next speaker is Nikia Briscoe, then Sarah Zimmerman.
Good afternoon. I'm Nikia Briscoe. I am a proud tenant in District 8. I spoke with you guys once before, and I'm here to reiterate, my plight is the same as the other 96,000 state workers I'm sure that SEIU represents. I am also one. My rent is more than half of my take-home pay. That's not including utilities and other things. I have five children, as well as grandchildren, that I have to support, so it's really difficult. When I moved, I downsized to a smaller home in order to be able to afford more. My rent is now way more than I was paying in the larger home that I was once in, so I do ask for you guys' support in passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming back.
Next speaker is Sarah Zimmerman, then Kathy Crezwell.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for all of your hard work. I came to Sacramento in 2005 to buy a home. As a single mom, escaping domestic violence, I loved the vibrancy of the city, the most integrated city in the country. It infuriates me to see the threat of community destruction where only wealthy people can afford to live in our neighborhoods. I've spent time listening to our members across the city who have shared intimate and terrifying stories with me. A woman who was evicted at seven months pregnant with her autistic son, a woman scared to complain about the drinking water for fear of getting evicted, a woman who lives with her five- and 12-year-old children in a house whose electrical wiring was so bad it started a fire, and now sleeps on the living room floor of a friend's house because she can't afford the $5,000 for first and last month's rent. We hope that this ordinance will be implemented in 30 days, as laid out in the city charter. I value the leadership of Councilmember Hanson and the mayor, as well as Councilmembers Gara and Jennings, and I look forward to working together to create housing policy that protects tenants and sows the seeds that will enable Sacramento to continue blossoming as a welcoming city for people of all means, and protect our diverse human ecosystem.
Next speaker is Kathy Crezwell, then Omega Brewer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Sacramento Housing, I'm Kathy Crezwell, I'm the Board President of the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and we strongly support this modest compromise proposal, which will really make a difference in the lives of renters in Sacramento. The ultimate solution to homelessness is more affordable homes. But as importantly, we need to have protections to keep people in their homes. And so we need to have a two-pronged approach that increases the supply, and then works to protect people so that they don't have to risk losing their homes through no fault of their own. This ordinance will do that, and we are strongly important, I think they are strongly important, and we really support them. We also are excited about the rent registry. It is really important to get good information about exactly what is happening, and so we're going to work, we want to work directly with you to make sure we collect the kind of information that will enable us to know, do we need to extend the ordinance? Do we also need to strengthen it to make sure that the protections that have been put in place actually do work? So we really appreciate the leadership that it took. This is not an easy issue, and we know that it takes courage to take these kind of actions, and so we appreciate the leadership that it took to get us here, and we urge a yes vote, and we look forward to continuing to work to solve Sacramento and California's housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Oh, your good work.
Next speaker is Omega Brewer, then Fabrizio Sasso.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Omega Brewer. I am one of the proponents of the stabilization measure. I am also a legislative advocate at SEIU Local 1,000, and I am a proud Sacramentoan who lives in District 4, Councilmember Hanson's district. Thank you, thank you. One, I want to thank you, in particular, Councilmembers Hanson, Gara, and Jennings, for working with our coalition to find this agreement. This agreement is an important first step in bringing real stabilization to our communities, so that, as you've heard with all the stories before today, and even the ones today, to keep families in their homes and keep communities intact. I want to also thank Mayor Steinberg, who I just, you know, just applaud for taking the courage and starting this journey with us a couple of years ago. It has not, it was not easy to get to this point, but because he was willing to dance that dance with us, we are, and start this process, we're here today. It's, it's been a long time coming. It's, it, I just want to reiterate, it is an important first step, but as has been stated by Kathy, and Sarah, and Margarita, and Yvonne, and all of our partners, it is one step in a long process. We, you know, people are still suffering, and we need to work together to create meaningful pol, continue to create meaningful policy so that we can eliminate poverty in the city of Sacramento. I know we can do it, and this is a great first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Next speaker is Fabrizio Sasso, then Arnolfo De La Cruz.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Fabrizio Sasso, Executive Director of the Sacramento Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO, and member of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition. We are in support of the ordinance. So for over two years, we've been looking to find solutions to our housing crisis, and this ordinance represents real progress. Prior to our advocacy, there was no discussion on how our city can help working people keep up with the rising cost of rents, and I want to applaud you, Mayor Steinberg, for getting this thing really moving along and pushing this, and Steve Hanson, and Councilmember Hanson, and your staff for working with us. Thank you for both of your leaderships on this, and the other council members who are part of the process. You know, we already know the facts about the housing crisis here, and I just want to say that this ordinance is a first step towards providing immediate relief for those who are experiencing the unregulated greed by some of the worst actors in this industry, who prey on the economically vulnerable for profit. And let's be clear, this is not a rent control ordinance, this is an anti-gouging, anti-rent gouging ordinance, and we've heard stories of families experiencing 20, 30, 40% increases in the rent from one month to the next, forced to move out, many ending up on the streets. These are real people that this ordinance will help. We've heard stories of hard-working people who are evicted from their homes without a fair reason. These are real people that this ordinance will help, and it will help them almost immediately. Let's do it in a month, 30 days? Is this the panacea for our housing crisis? No. We need to build more affordable and workforce housing, like the Arden Project, invest in our housing trust fund, find solutions so that people who build these homes, construction workers who build these homes, can afford these homes, and let's raise the wage in this city as well. There's so much more advocacy we can do. And to my progressive peysons who are asking for more protections, they shouldn't give up. Progress is an outcome of action, and this ordinance represents progress when two years ago, there was no action. I'd ask of them, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good here. Providing people some security in their communities, lives, and homes is working for the common good, and this is the central of government, and I know this is why you-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
We ask for your "I" vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arnolfo.
Good afternoon. Arnolfo De La Cruz, Executive Vice President of SEIU 2015 California's Long-Term Care Workers Union. On behalf of the 13,000 home care and nursing home workers who live in the city of Sacramento, we urge the support and full adoption of the Tenant Protection and Relief Act. I want to appreciate our members who are, who stand to be benefited from this, and then also, we have some members here with us today who woke up very early and joined us from the Bay Area. For our members who are from the Fillmore, or the Mission District in San Francisco, we've seen the devastation that the lack of tenants' rights can have in our communities. Not only does it displace people, it has, it can rip the soul out of a community. As a product of the Central Valley, I'm proud of the leadership of the mayor and the city council. Not only are we standing in support of this, SEIU 2015 stands ready to help on the implementation and educating our community, and continuing to work with the state legislature and the governor to do more for California's vulnerable housing population. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Elise Taylor, then Rosario Ramirez, and then Elise Taylor? Elsie, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm, you know, nervous, but I'm here, I'm gonna do this. Okay, my name is Elsie Taylor, I live in District 8 of our city, and good morning to everyone. I'm here to support the members of the renters, affordable and stable place to live. I am a home care provider and a member of SEIU 2015 for DuckAid. I am passionate about taking care of senior citizens and people with disabilities. I give them medical and support of their daily needs, so they can live at home with respect and dignity. I also, it's not a high-paying jay, job, and we are overworked and underpaid. I want you also to know that we are over, we, what is this? We, the rent has went up over 8% since 2014 to 2018. The home care providers, we have been fighting for a fair contract with the, with the county supervisors. We went the whole entire time without a raise. Do you think our rent, do you think our rent stopped going up? It kept on going up, without a raise. No, it didn't. I don't know where I'm at, but anyway, it keep on going up. The seniors I take care of, rent went up as well. There are over 13,000 home care providers that I work to do, well, I'm nowhere left to do work. The rent increases have been year after year, and make, and I make a dime more. Many of them are homeless. If you want to do something about this, y'all, do something about this now, and help us in protecting relief, an act today. I, I'm, I'm, I, I need to relieve, I've been needing a relief for years. We're watching how, to how you vote, and-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
You did a, hold on. You did a good job. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rosario Ramirez, then Leonor Chihuahua, then Rachel Iskow. Rosario?
Hi, everyone. My name is Rosario Ramirez. I work for SEIU USWW. We represent 2,000 members here in Sacramento, and this is hurting, housing crisis is hurting our members. Our members make between 12, 25 to 1265, and right now, I have seen our members getting increases of $600 just like that. And they had to make a tough decision. They had to make a tough decision to feed their kids, or pay for the rent, or pay for the gas so they can go to work. So I'm here to support, I'm really here, and also here to thank you for all the support you have given us, but also, this is an urgency. It's happening everywhere, it's happening in Sacramento, and we need to stop this housing crisis, and our members are generous, and they were here with us, but they had to leave because they had to go to work, but I really want to thank you for all the work that you guys are doing, and really thank you, because you guys are helping them stay here, and helping them stay, and helping them stay in their homes, and help them to actually be able, so their kids can be able to have, have housing. A lot of members, a lot of members, millennials who are between the 20s and 25, they're having a hard time to even stay in Sacramento. They're having a hard time- They're having a hard time to even raise their families here. And we have seen in other places, and we want to make sure that Sacramento takes a lead and that Sacramento stands up for renters and renters' rights, and we're here to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Leonor Chihuahua, and then Rachel Iskow. Is Leonor here?
Leonor.
Okay, Rachel Iskow, then Michelle Perissette.
Rachel, you either, but she's.
Thank you. Michelle Perissette. Falling, Michelle is Tristan Brown.
Michelle, welcome. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you. Michelle Perissette, Housing for Sacramento. I am the third proponent on the rent stabilization initiative. I am so excited to be here. I can't, I can't believe we're here. It's been a long road. Mayor, thank you for your leadership. Councilmember Hanson, thank you for yours. I, I support this ordinance. It's, it's a fantastic first step, and I hope there will be many more after it. The city charter allows for a 30-day implementation of an ordinance. I know we're talking about 60 days, but it's possible in the city charter. I know it could be a little bit messy. We accept messy by bringing in the fastest possible implementation. I know we saw it with our initiative. The moment that word got out that we added the initiative, it was possible that something might change. We started receiving from some of the folks who were organizing letters from their landlords saying that they were getting these big rent increases before the change happens, right? So I think with, in the absence of a fast implementation or protections, we could see some big increases over the next 60 days. So at 30, I don't know if we have the votes for urgency, we can get it immediately, but 30 days would be, would be great. I look forward to working with you and your staff and the city manager on implementation. Implementation is going to be really important here, and there's still a lot of work to do. Thank you so much for all the work, Council Vice, Vice Mayor, Gara, Councilmember Jennings. Really appreciate the work that you've done here. And thanks to Matt Reed, wherever he is, who's put in so much work into this. Thanks.
Next speaker is Tristan Brown, then Regina Engelbretson.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Tristan Brown, resident of District 7. First, just want to thank you for this work and all those involved. I'm very excited to see something that brings immediate relief to some of those folks, our neighbors, our brothers, our sisters in our community that are really struggling to make ends meet. I, I think this is a great first step on immediate relief. I have a friend who has just moved to Sacramento from Utah, moved her husband and two-year-old to come to Sacramento for the opportunities that we always talk about. Very exciting to work in higher ed here in Sacramento. We have a lot of access to universities here. The one problem that she's really having is finding housing. Finding housing, is she going to afford for her family? And, and that's a big shock for someone to come from Utah thinking that Sacramento is a great place for her. And I think hopefully she will be able to find it as things adjust here, and, and that's the promise that Sacramento, I think, brings to a lot of other people across the country. We are a city on the rise. We're getting a lot of attention and hopefully for good things. A couple of points. We hope that there's a lot of attention given to what happens in that 11th month. It takes a year to get that protection from having your just cause, or having the just cause eviction right. We're hoping that we do take a long look at what happens to people in that 11th month. I know I would be sweating a lot to wonder if I'm going to be evicted to get a new tenant in those, and have another person, or if I will be able to make it to the 12th month and then be vested with that, let's call it a right. We do think housing is a right, and this is a great step forward to achieving that. There's more work to be done. I spent a lot of time over the last couple of years, for one reason or another, talking to a lot of residents in Sacramento, especially in District 7. And rental increase costs are a huge burden and probably one of the top priorities that I ever hear about. It is very, very expensive to live in that part of our city, and I know people are looking for relief, so thanks to everyone who's done some great work to make this happen. I think it's a first step in a long road, and, and hopefully we don't get caught in the myth that we can build our way out of this. I think that's a very dangerous path to take, and this is a good first step in helping.
Thank you. Next speaker is Regina Engelbretson, then Chris Greeney.
Hello, I'm Regina Engelbretson. I work with, with In-Home Supporting Services. Steinberg, I'm talking to you. I know that you can make anything possible. My landlord refuses to put bread bars up for my husband. He fell a couple of weeks ago. I had to call 911. That poor amulet says, "Come and pick him up off the floor," because I could not do it. You see how big he is? There's no way I could do it. I had a call for help, and my landlord will not put up bread bars. I've told her and told her and told her again, and she says, "I'm sorry, you're gonna have to wait. I'm sorry, I'm too busy. I'm sorry. I'm pleading with you right now. Could you please make my landlord put up bread bars so he does not end up on the floor again? Please." Yes, you.
No, I, I see a very good man sitting in the third row, Jim Lofgren, who heads the Apartment Association, and even though he's on the other side of this issue, he always steps forward to help people in need even when he's not asked. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to talk to Mr. Lofgren right now, and I'm sure he would be willing to do whatever he can to, to try to help out your situation, okay?
Okay, and another thing, another thing is, I also have to ask you if there is possible ways of being able to open up more disabled places for disabled people to live.
We need more housing of all kinds, and so we take your point very seriously. And as others have said, this is a launching point for a much broader housing initiative, set of housing initiatives.
Yeah, but I know that you're, that you are capable of making anything work.
Well, I don't know about.
So I'm looking at you particularly to please make it work.
I appreciate your confidence in me, Regina. I promise you I will do my very, very best, always, but I want you to go talk to Mr. Lofgren right now.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you. And also, there's a lot of people at, 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 women's, it's called, it's women and children that are needing to have low-income housing, which you're not able to get because the affordable housing is not there. Is there any way possible that you can lower the rent to help people?
We are working on every strategy imaginable.
Okay, well, I know you are, and I appreciate you. You're awesome. I love you.
Thank you. All right, well, I would urge you to come back every week to the city council.
Next speaker is Chris Greeney, then Kevin Fiera.
Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Greeney. I am the President of the Sacramento and Sierra Building Trades. I stand in support of this ordinance and encourage you to do so as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin Fiera, then Mary Jane Jagdroninski.
Kevin Fiera, Executive Director of Sacramento and Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council. We are in support of this ordinance. We, that it will give the temporary relief that is needed while, at the same time, hopefully we can build more inventory for housing, not just housing, but affordable housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Next speaker is Mary Jane Jagdroninski, then Kevin Jen, Chris Jensen.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Mary Jane Jagdroninski, representing Community Housing Works. I'll get the selfie because we're going to be under one minute. We support this work later on the agenda. You have other, other people that are more eloquent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Jensen, then Carolyn Wilson.
Right. Bill and Carleen.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. My name is Chris Jensen. I'm retired and a resident in District 4. I remember a town hall meeting at Memorial Auditorium a few years back that Councilmember Hanson spoke at, and I mentioned rent protection. And so this is a very happy day for me. I'm, I'm in full support of this measure, or ordinance, or whatever item number 23 is, with a caveat, and that is that as a person that is on a fixed income, eight and a half percent increase is pretty high. My income doesn't go up like that. My income will go up with the CPI, and I understand linking it to that, but something to consider going forward is to thinking about people on fixed incomes. Proposition 13 was passed overwhelmingly for homeowners to protect especially seniors with fixed incomes so they wouldn't be taxed out of their, their housing. So it's just something to, to think about going forward. Thank you very much for all your work, and I hope that today isn't the last day we discuss this important, important item. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carolyn Wilson, then Rob Weiner.
Good afternoon, Mayor and the council members. My name is Carolyn Wilson, and I live in Allen Warren's District. I am facing a five-day eviction after being in my house for over seven years with my children. I pay my rent on time. I live with rats, moles, you name it, flooding of the houses. The landlord will only take action when code enforcement is involved. I have electrical issues. I have three young girls that go to school, but he tells me he's retiring, and he does not want to let me stay in the house after seven years. He's never had a problem collecting rent. I pay it on time because I'm of a belief, you need to pay where you stay. You cannot stay for free. You can't live anyplace for free. But I have three young girls that walk two blocks to school. I've tried to find places to move, but the rent is like $800 more than what I pay now. So he's not sympathetic to my cause. I need someone to help me. My due date to move out is the 18th of this month.
Okay.
And I can't find anything.
We will, Alan, will you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Warren will do everything he can to try to help you.
Next speaker is Rob Weiner, then David Huerta.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Rob Weiner. I'm a resident of Curtis Park and a landlord. Now, I know that politics is the art of the possible, and this is a positive first step, albeit, mind you, a baby step. Now, this measure is neither the end of Western civilization as we know it, and some will tell you, nor is it the panacea that's going to stop, in my view, a lot of addictions. Most of the low-income people that I know and I work with are already paying 50, 60, 70% of income, and they cannot respond or tolerate a 1% increase in rent, let alone an 8.5% increase. It will address and bear a band of folks for whom an 8.5% increase in rent is the difference between being housed and unhoused. But for the extremely low people, low-income people and vulnerable people, I don't know how this, this measure will prevent them from becoming displaced. So my view is that what we should celebrate, a small step forward, especially the eviction protections and the registering on renting, that we need to move forward with strong, verifiable, and powerful rent control. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is David Huerta, then Denise Ross-Francombe.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and the city council from Sacramento. My name is David Huerta. I'm a president of SEIU USWW. We're 45,000 members up and down the state of California from Sacramento all the way to San Diego. We represent janitors, security officers, airport workers, basically workers who are in low-wage industries. And, you know, I can tell you right now that our members here in Sacramento and our members throughout the state are suffering right now, the crisis which is housing in California. I applaud the fact that you're taking this first step forward and doing something now to try to rein that in, and it's going to help our members now to really have that just cause and be able to cap their, their increases. But we can do more, and we got to continue to strive to do more, because the reality is that what kind of city do we want to have? We want to have a city that only the wealthy can live in? Then where do the workers live at? Right? Our workers work very hard. We consider them the invisible workforce, right? They're the folks you don't see who come in at night, every night, and leave at 2:30 in the morning, get up in the morning, and make sure their children are ready for school. And they work hard, work very hard. They deserve the work, they deserve to live in the city that they work in. And so I applaud again your effort in this first step going forward. We need to continue to move forward, and city in Sacramento that is in the state capital, when you move forward, hopefully it serves as an example for the rest of the state. So again, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much for coming to.
Denise Ross-Francombe is the final speaker in favor, and then Chrystanne Giles is neutral.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I want to start by thanking councilmembers Jennings, Gara, Hanson, and the mayor for their work on this. A special huge thank you to you, Steve, for all your hard work. We really appreciate you, and I think you were all a big part, obviously, in getting us here. The other thing I wanted to say is I strongly support this ordinance as a temporary measure, which will give us an opportunity to, to pursue ways to solve the, the problem permanently. And of course, the only way that's going to happen is by increasing our supply of available housing. So let's get this done and move forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think you owe me a selfie.
I owe you a selfie, Denise. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chrystanne Giles, who is neutral, and then we will start our opposition.
An hour for the neutrality.
Thank you. We'll start my PowerPoint presentation. On behalf of the North State Building Industry Association, I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment this afternoon. I appreciate the work that Mayor Steinberg did in addition to councilmembers Hanson, Gara, and Jennings. Thank you very much. We appreciate the safeguards that you have written into this proposal, but we remain concerned, and that's why we're taking a neutral position on the Tenant Protection and Relief Act before you today. Rent control may sound like a good solution to Sacramento's housing problems, but it has many unintended consequences. I lived in Santa Monica from 2005 to 2010. Their rent control policy started in 1979, and soon the rents in that city were a fraction of those from the adjacent communities. Several of my neighbors who owned single-family homes in Palm Springs, the Inland Empire in Los Angeles, kept their seaside rent-controlled apartments for decades, paying $700 to $900 a month for their two-bedroom apartments, where I paid $3,000 for mine. When units became vacant, landlords had larger pool of applicants to choose from, and so they started renting exclusively to single professionals instead of families with children. This changed the demographics of the city. These policies create a happy windfall for our chosen few who are currently renting now in their dream homes, but they don't consider the economic forces on the housing market, and therefore they hurt the very people they are trying to serve. The lower rental prices for more tenants will try to rent those apartments, and higher rental prices, the landlords want to rent their apartments. These are two specific instances of the law of demand and the law of supply. The owners will be motivated to hold back some of their potential units, holding them for storage, keeping them for family members. The city disrupts the balance of the market by creating a ceiling below the market clearing price. It creates a shortage, that is, more people want to rent apartments than the landlords will provide. These policies drive money out of the rental housing market. If a builder can't charge what they believe it is worth.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Without these policies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are going to start our opposition at 3:30.
Yeah, 3:30. Thank you.
It's 3:30. The first is Jim Lofgren, then Rosalyn Starks.
My name is Jim Lofgren, and I'm the Senior Vice President of the California Apartment Association. Everyone knows we are in the midst of an unprecedented housing shortage. I commend the mayor and members of the city council for your efforts to secure more funding for affordable housing and to address the challenge of finding permanent housing for our homeless citizens. However, we cannot support the ordinance before you today for several reasons. One, rent control, even when rebranded as an anti-rent gouging ordinance, is a failed policy that by itself will not generate one single new unit of housing. It will do the exact opposite. According to CoStar, a respected industry data source, when the state of Oregon in February passed a statewide rent cap of CPI plus 7%, multifamily investment immediately declined by 38%. I worry that the same will happen in Sacramento. Two, CAA was not involved in the drafting of this ordinance, even though we are a major stakeholder. We find many elements of the ordinance to be vague and confusing. Passing the ordinance without proper vetting and then leaving it up to staff to figure out how to implement is a recipe for disaster. A lot of cleanup will be needed if you pass this ordinance in its present form. Three, implementation within 60 days is unreasonable. 30 days is reckless. The city will struggle to have staffing in place to properly administer the program, and owners and managers will have very little notice of the new requirements. This is troubling. Four, the just cause tenancy termination policies in the ordinance are a threat to the security of tenants and neighborhoods. They require the landlords not only to list specific costs for eviction, but be prepared to prove the case in court. In cases of criminal activity, that prove, that may prove, require testimony from tenants, which can be next to impossible. This program may. This program may cost millions of dollars...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
...and raise the rents.
Hold on.
And we ask you to reject the ordinance?
No!
Excuse me. No, we're not going to have people shouting out from the audience here. We've heard almost an hour of testimony in favor. The opposition gets to be heard without disruption here, and he was just concluding his comments, so go ahead.
I just want to say that the...
Conclude the comments. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rosalyn Starks, then Robert Copeland.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak to the council. I had emailed my concerns last week to Councilman Jennings and also to your office, Mayor. I've been a landlord in Sacramento for 20 years. 60% of my tenants are low-income. I do accept Section 8. I have known for the past 10 years that there has been not enough income-based housing. I come from base housing, but in my day it was called project housing. I remember my mother moving us out in the middle of the night because she could not afford the rent or to be put out. I've been in multiple schools as a result of that. So I do have empathy and sympathy. My rents are below market, and I personally do not take issue with tapping rents due to gouging and increase. However, I do object to losing my property rights to the city and the tenant. The city determines if and when I can regain possession of my unit. In other words, I gain a tenant for life whether I like it or not. Rights for eviction are pretty straightforward for non-payment or failure to allow access. But breach of a rental agreement is dicey and is difficult for most owners to prove. Case in point, I have a tenant that has unauthorized occupants. I'm just wondering, do I need to hire surveillance, get an attorney, go in disguise, hang out in front of my unit to basically determine and to justify what's going on? Criminal activity? If a suspect is dealing drug activity, would me as an owner have to be required to buy from that drug dealer in order to justify what's going on? The above is difficult to prove because it would require neighbors or tenants to become informants, possibly endangering them, or better yet, owners would have to hire attorneys.
Ma'am...
Just cause eviction has not decreased...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Just cause eviction has not decreased...
Our next speaker is Robert Copeland, and then Tim Sullivan.
...with the highest higher homelessness.
Robert Copeland, then Tim Sullivan.
I'm part of the Sacramento Tenancy Union, but I'm not going to speak for the tenants. I'm a straight word of Sacramento County Green Party, and we are opposed to this for the following reasons. This is not rent control. This is temporary, five years. It's not permanent. People that are on disability, senior citizens, they're not going to be able to afford an up to 10% rent increase a year. We need a lower cap on it, and we need a permanent. And as far as, why taking out of people's hands? I mean, other people vote on this in a ballot measure next year. We don't want to date on that. We need a democratic, elected rent board, not one appointed by the city. Because the city probably elected one that's pro-landlord to mediate rental disputes between tenants. And one year for just cause evictions? What happened 11 months? You get evicted. It should be, a just cause should be day one for all tenants. Steve Hansen, Eric Gera, Rick Jennings, Mayor Steinberg, you made a major mistake on this. And I know people from the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee, Poor People's Campaign, they're all opposed to this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Sullivan, then Michelle Coranta.
Councilmember? I just want to say just a couple of things. You know, the ballot measure and SB 1482, that's San Francisco, or the politician from San Francisco is trying to push through, and the one the Oregon just pushed through, which is 7% cap and just cause eviction, all three of these all exempt small owner-occupied landlords, which I am myself. And I've had the same tenant for years and years and years. I never raised the rent, you know? And, you know, I don't think you understand how much friction it creates living with your tenant when you're in owner-occupied situation, you know? I mean, if these other ones are, the other, the ballot measure, the other ones are exempting owner occupancy, when the tenant is there on site with the tenant, it creates a tremendous amount of friction. A fair cause eviction would create a tremendous amount of friction between me and my tenant, you know? And it's a tenuous situation at best, you know? And it's an interpersonal relationship. It's not a business relationship, you know? We kind of, you know? And what this does is, it creates just an incredible amount of tension. And what's going to happen, what I fear is, people are going to start Airbnb-ing in my situation. And I think Airbnb should be outlawed because it takes more rentals off the, you know, it does, you need to monitor Airbnb. And if, you know, all these other initiatives are exempting small landlords like myself...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
You know, can you please just...
Thank you. Our next speaker...
...just cause eviction.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't have a problem with rent caps, but just cause eviction.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Michelle Coranta, then Rodney Lumen.
Hi, Mayor and councilmember. My name is Michele Coranta, 25 years resident in Sacramento, over 40 years of small landlord housing provider in San Francisco. The question I would ask you is, what's the housing situation in San Francisco? As of this year, there is 41 years rent control in San Francisco. It's impossible for me to get rid of a tenant for any reason whatsoever. Even if I can do it, I cannot raise the rent. So when people says the landlord evicts a tenant, you can raise the rent in San Francisco, it's impossible. Now, when they're there 10, 20 years, there is no housing change of people moving on. Those housing, they stay there forever and ever, blocked. If somebody gets evicted legally or illegally, there is a change of tenancy. Without eviction or tenant moving out, there is no change of tenancy. It's impossible for me to take care of my units, cleaning, painting, upgrading units. When there is four to 20 people living in one-bedroom apartment because they realize the landlord, the owner, has no power whatsoever to evict anybody for any reason except killing, that's no good for me or the tenant even worse because they live like, I don't even know what terminology they use, when there is almost 20 people in one-bedroom apartment with one bath, and they stay there forever.
Thank you, sir, for testifying. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Rodney Lumen, then Rita Gordon.
We had problems these earlier. Good afternoon, council. Mayor, my name is Rod Lumen. I own a small property management company. I represent a few duplex owners and triplex owners throughout the city of Sacramento. This ordinance will cause substantial amount of paperwork, other notices, to be served on to the tenants. The reason that it will cause that is because we will not have to keep a paper trail of every item that goes on so that when just cause eviction comes up, it can't be, well, you didn't document that they didn't take care of that. You didn't document that issue over here. Because what happens with property managers and tenants is, most of the time it's a conversation. Most of the time it's upfront with them, saying, hey, look, you know what? We have this issue, that issue, that we have to deal with. This ordinance now causes us now to put everything in writing so that when we do have to bring this up, it's now more issues that are approvable. So when we come in front of the mediator, now we have these items up there. This also will cause shorter stays because now, instead of saying the tenant can stay 12 months, it will be 11 months because if a tenant is questionable, there will be no reason to keep them, okay? It'll be that we need to find another tenant that'll work more closely with the landowner. My other concerns is your timeframe, 60 days? Well, SHRA doesn't even allow you to do a correction of a lease without a 90-day notice, and you're going to try and put this whole program in place in 60 days. I also want to question on how you're going to hire, train, and I know you're working closely with RHIP, or the Residential Housing Inspection Program, which took quite a long time to put in place as well. But a quick story about your Residential Housing Inspection Program. One of the inspectors come out who went through all your training and everything else, did an inspection on one of our units. We get to the door, the gentleman goes, hey, I smell carbon monoxide. That's the training we're doing? Carbon monoxide's the odorless killer. I'm concerned that that's what this bill's going to do, is kill our property owners and their rights.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Rita Gordon, then Cynthia Ray.
Thank you. I'm Rita Gordon, and I'm the Business Development Manager for DH Construction in Sacramento. I am not a rental owner. Our company rebuilds properties after a fire or other disasters, with many of these being rental housing. There are many companies like ours that provide products and services to the rental housing industry. The potential negative impact to these companies is often overlooked when new rental housing laws and ordinances are passed. Currently, I serve on the Board of Directors of several local housing-related associations, including the California Apartment Association, the National Association of Residential Property Managers, and the Institute for Real Estate Management. My role on these boards is to represent the viewpoint of my fellow vendors. I've spoken with my peers in other areas of California where rent control measures have been implemented. We have every reason to believe similar negative consequences in Sacramento will happen if this ordinance is passed. These include rental owners deciding to take their properties out of the rental market completely because the mandated restrictions prove too onerous to them; rental owners canceling plans to upgrade their properties because they forecast that they cannot charge enough rent to pay for these improvements; rental owners delaying or reducing the scope of maintenance and doing the bare minimum to comply with building codes. And I was told by one of my vendor peers, when the city of Richmond adopted rent control, his company suffered an immediate 40% drop in business. Over time, that means lost economic activity in that city, and no doubt, some employees will lose their jobs. Please consider the economic impact of rent control on companies that do business with owners of single-family and multifamily properties. Rent control is not a good solution to the housing shortage. Only building more housing will solve this problem, and building more housing will bring more jobs to Sacramento. Thanks for allowing me to share my perspective.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Ray, then Rick Stevenson.
Dear councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Cynthia Ray. I'm the Senior Director of Acquisitions with FPI Management, Inc. FPI is the fifth-largest apartment management company in the nation, and we're homegrown from Sacramento for over 51 years. FPI manages 71 apartment buildings in the city and the county totaling 12,300 units. FPI clients currently have 4,100 units in the development pipeline in the city of Sacramento, and two of these development projects have been approved by the city and entitled since 2007. As you know, rent control does not supply one single housing unit, and we need to build. A recent study said the county of Sacramento was behind 58,000 units. The state is behind 2.5 million housing units, and I'm sure the city is behind as well. Housing in California is not easy to build. It takes lots of capital, patience, and commitment to get through the process. A client told me last week that in the Bay Area, or the Bay Area is now off limits to several institutional capital funds. If this happens to Sacramento, it will be devastating. Not only do we need to build housing, we need to maintain our current housing stock. As capital dries up in California, so do renovation dollars. Buildings that are not maintained become a hazard and eventually fall out of the housing stock. I work on 15,000 to 20,000 units a year of new business, which includes value-add, new development, market rate, affordable, deep subsidy, and renovation. Though FPI is a California-based company, our clients are moving to other states, Texas, Oklahoma, Louisiana, Nevada. My California transaction pipeline has gone down 28% since last year...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Cynthia, thank you.
Next speaker is Rick Stevenson, then Jade Nicole.
Want to make it clear, I do not, nor have I ever owned a residential rental property. But I'm chair of the ION Sacramento Rent Control Study Group. And of course, we got a surprise late Thursday when a rent control measure suddenly appeared on today's city council agenda. This is secret government at its worst. There have been no public hearings, and ordinance may well be crammed down city residents' throats in a process allowing only 120 seconds of input from each member of the public regardless of expertise or research. Allegedly, this was spurred on by brutal aspects of a ballot measure put on by signature that would go far beyond any California example to the point that it incorporates multiple legal flaws that would very likely result in courts invalidating the measure. In reality, this is a fake boogeyman to scare and questioning quick council agreement to a matter that deserves public vetting. The real issue is, why are we controlled by secret government actions? The council has until October to make any decision that would impact what goes on the ballot or not. Why do it now? Anyway, this process spits in the face of open government and transparent government. It should be rejected by the city council in favor of an open process where virtues of rent control or up and downsides of any flavor receives a thorough public examination.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Jade Nicole. Jade Nicole, then Mac Worthy, then Valerie Williams.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm against this proposal. There's not enough protection for tenants when the process goes to tenant's court for the unlawful detainer when rights are being violated. I personally went through an illegal eviction this last year with Sacramento Masonic Temple Building, and it was a hard battle. In July of 2018, my car was totaled at a parking meter when a tree fell on it. The city refused any responsibility. I'm without a vehicle because of it. In December 2018, my apartment of five years was destroyed by a sewer system breaking. The landlord refused to repair or give me a habitable unit. Had Ali been alive, this would have never happened. During this time, my community was going through an illegal eviction because we were serving artists that are traditionally marginalized and making an impact for the poor in downtown. The Masons were not very happy of the progress that we were making, and as a result, they refused to accept rent. And what is far to lie to say that we defaulted? Well, if you refuse to accept rent, how can we pay? We fought it in the courts for nine years. They did a trial against somebody that's fighting to stay alive that wasn't even there in court. There are numerous, and I saw through those courts, the courts, the amount of people that are being displaced, elderly, disabled, people that are poor. We have to change the system that's in the courts that is corrupt with the fucking judges that are there.
Yes, ma'am.
I lost everything I have because of Sacramento's inclusion and tenants' crisis. For the last two years, I've been fighting for pay equality, for our community to be paid for two years' worth of work from wide-open walls. Yes, that is why I served in that...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Valerie Williams.
Excuse, excuse me. Excuse me, we don't shut out. Jade, please. Don't do that.
I'm still laughing because this is what the old folks are shitting and stepping in. You're going to smell this shit for many years because this is garbage. When you sign a documentation, if you want to do something, city council, you have a committee meeting and tell these people to show you what they signed. If you didn't know what you signed, you're supposed to get put out at any time. But we're looking at here, somebody don't have the knowledge to read their lease. That's y'all's fault. This is started when the legal California cities took 11% of taxpayers' money for development. And you know you're lying. All these homeless people are coming here, and Mayor, you rolling their back. You got enough money now? You got enough money now. Ain't nothing to be said about homeless folk. Homeless people had to be rehabilitated before they could rent an apartment. The average homeless person here in Sacramento, add us, is eight hundred dollars a month. People, wake up. Get educated. How many city councils have seen a lease that they say was an illegal? The state of California, I've always had, I used to hand them out to handbooks. I lost my duplex because there was no money. When a landlord is charging you for your utilities and you can't write them all, and he turn around and write them all, you got a problem. I have a proposal, if you want to pay for it, the neighborhood get on with all this. If you straighten up S H R A and tell the truth. Buy the equity in your property, and it don't have to be in your neighborhood, sign it off to the bank, and parlay the amount for the project, and when the project is accepted, lift it off, and you have a right people to who rent from you, and you have a supplementing thing. Wake up people and get educated. This is socialism altogether. Listen, people, you're going to be down up shit creek with a no pal, and I'm gonna be laughing at you. I'm gonna be laughing at you. I'll turn subject, yes, I'll turn subject, but I probably got twelve more.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valerie Williams, then Khalil Ferguson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Valerie Williams, Executive Fellow with the California Urban Partnership. The California Urban Partnership opposes the city council's pending proposal for the Tenant Protection and Relief Act. We support our allies regarding the ballot initiative. The current proposal by this council is insufficient in addressing the lack of affordable housing options facing Sacramento residents. Sacramento needs rent control that is equitable and intentional to protect our most vulnerable populations, children, youth, and families, who do not fit the stereotypical narrative of an unhoused individual. The council's proposal will only continue to perpetuate the lack of affordable housing and the homeless issues in the city. Annual rent increases of up to ten percent displace lower-income families who are the most at risk, which could result in a variety of negative implications. If families continue to be displaced, then the city of Sacramento will continue to see adverse childhood education, neighborhood instability, and continued economic insecurity in communities of color. Additionally, these factors inflict unnecessary trauma while catering to the interests of wealthy developers. We need city council to address the root causes of displacement, not just its symptoms. Lastly, we need more subsidies to build more affordable housing units now. Replace the affordable housing that has been demolished and provide us with rent control that is equitable and intentional to protect children, youth, and families. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Khalil Ferguson, then Jonah Paul.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm Khalil Ferguson, Executive Fellow with the California Urban Partnership. We are here to urge this council to support the rent control ballot initiative, which seeks to implement a stronger measure for rent control and tenant protection, especially within the areas that have lowest, that are in the lowest percentage of disposable income. We also advocate for increased funding for building low-income housing within the city limits. Fact of the matter is, wages are not increasing. They are, in fact, the same level of wages in nineteen seventy, when accounting for inflation. In this regard, the cost of living has been increasing while economic mobility has remained relatively stagnant. Combining the rate for rent increases to the Consumer Price Index would not aid in absolving increasing housing prices, as the price of consumer goods are still being inflated. Now, the implementation of sound rent control and greater funding for building low-income affordable housing, community revitalization projects from grassroots organizations cannot be, cannot serve, house underserved populations. When the free market becomes so inefficient that our local economy is not maximizing its capacity for growth, the local government must play a role in restoring this efficiency. Keynesian economics points to how this means our city must bolster the economic status of the most economically vulnerable population. There is unequivocal correlation between the increasing number of homeless individuals and the proliferation of gentrification within the city of Sacramento, as well as the United States. Development and gentrification are not synonymous, otherwise it would just be called development. This is because displacement is inherent to gentrification, the removal of the lower class for a more affluent group of people. As a result of rampant gentrification, we have observed displacement become ubiquitous throughout California. This reminds me of a quote Sister Osada Shakur said, "The rulers of this country have always considered their property more important than our lives." So to repair this kind of injustice, the city needs transformative community development powered by equity and reinvestment, which includes rent control measures outlined in the ballot initiative. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonah Paul, then Nick Foreigner.
This one seems to work better. My name is Jonah Paul. I'm co-chair of Sacramento Democratic Socialists of America, and I'm a renter in District Three. My organization is committed to real rent control. That is why we have to lead the Housing for Sacramento Coalition in June, along with our community partners, Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment, Tenants Together, and S C I U Ten Two One. We fundamentally disagree with this weak compromise between our former coalition and the council. It will harm renters for the long term. Here's why. The measure amounts to a temporary and easily enforceable eight-to-ten percent cap with the most superficial eviction protections. This is a pittance that won't help the thousands of rent-burdened, working-class Sacramento renters that need strong and permanent protections. It's a veneer of activity to paper over the crisis and to rob renters of their political voice. What Sacramento wants is for the council to meet its constitutional obligation to our democracy and to us all to place the Sacramento Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Charter Amendment on the ballot for March today. Beyond stakeholders and closed-door meetings, who is really convinced by this? Landlords will hate it because they hate anything that involves, sorry, that anything that involves them that they didn't write themselves. Renters will reject it because it doesn't protect them. My guess is that a paid consultant, maybe someone that helped you get elected, sat down at a fancy lunch and told you, "You can be here where villain renters today." And I'm guessing that you believed him. Think twice before you play yourselves and turn an army of renter voters against you. Put real rent control to the ballot. Let our community decide.
The next speaker is Nick Foreigner. Following Nick is Sam.
Good afternoon. I've lived in Sacramento my entire life. I've owned a duplex in South Side Park for three years. The only reason I was able to afford to move there was because I purchased a duplex and have a tenant that's helping pay the mortgage. One unit is my primary residence. My tenant's rent is currently under market rate and is contributing approximately forty-four percent to the mortgage and utilities, water, sewer, and garbage. I work full-time in addition to being a landlord, and my property does not generate income for me. I can't imagine raising rent more than five percent in any year as a landlord, and I've heard some pretty terrible stories today. My current time has been living in my property for sixteen months. This ordinance will create new regulatory burdens for owners like myself and an additional program fee. I request the city council seriously consider an exemption for these requirements for duplexes and triplexes when the property is also the owner's primary residence. The absence of any flexibility will require that those costs have to be passed on to the tenants, and that's not why everyone's here today. Finally, the city has available space that cannot be rented due to zoning regulations. I urge the city to take action on modifying zoning requirements in the city to allow property owners to create additional rental units from existing vacant space. Myself, I have a basement that's mostly above ground, about eight-hundred square feet. It's empty. I can't do anything with it because the city won't allow me to put another unit in. What we really need is additional housing. This proposal doesn't do that, while it does provide some protections. It will be a burden for many small property owners.
Thank you for coming.
Our next speaker is Sam with D S A. Following Sam is Elizabeth Urabe, and then Elliot Stevenson. It's Sam here. Elizabeth Urabe. Elliot Stevenson.
I'm speaking on behalf of Elizabeth.
Need folks to line up, please, if we can announce the next couple speakers. Madam Clerk, please.
I'm speaking for Elizabeth Urabe. I'm Andrew O'Tory, and on behalf of S C I U Ten Two One, we are opposing this proposed Tenant Protection Act, or Relief Act, but we are calling on the city council to set a date for our rent control ballot initiative that qualified for the two thousand twenty election. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Elliot Stevenson, then Will Fayer.
Hello, council members. I thought long and hard about my position on this. I'm a member of the Sacramento Tenants Union, and as an organization, we oppose this deal. However, I want to make it clear, we don't oppose helping renters in this city. We feel this doesn't go far enough. My opposition to this is twofold. On the first hand, it was undemocratic. Forty-four, over forty-four thousand people, including myself, signed on to vote for a charter amendment which would enshrine in-law tenant protections. Now we're being told this will not, or it's not being encouraged anymore, we'll say that. The campaign has sort of lost its steam. I wanted to vote on this, and I'm sure the other forty-four thousand people who put their signature on that didn't do so frivolously either. We need some serious and permanent tenant protections in this city. My second opposition to this is policy-related. It's not great. As we've already heard here today, a gentleman spoke earlier, he said, "This will essentially incentivize eleven-month evictions." And this is something we've been warning people about as well, that if you don't enshrine just cause on day one, you incentivize the landlord to get rid of the person before the twelfth month. That's no good for tenants, who are already precarious as it is. That's not protection. That's just hastening their exit and their displacement. The ten percent cap, of course, our paychecks don't go up by ten percent, so that's a big issue as well. And the unelected folks that would be mediating these disputes would not be accountable to the voters in the same way an elected rent board would. We demand a vote on the rent, on the charter amendment in two thousand twenty, and we want to know when that's gonna happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Will Fayer. Will Fayer, Les Light, then Bobby Ramey Clerk.
Hi, my name is William Fayer. Good afternoon. I am a renter in District Four and a member of the Sacramento D S A. So this deal is not sufficient. A maximum rent increase cap of ten percent doesn't translate into much security, when the average wage increase in Sacramento County last year was only two-point-nine percent. The rent cap next year under this proposal would be around three times the average increase in wage. There is also lackluster eviction protection, which only kicks in about after a year, leaving an obvious loophole for anyone so inclined to use it. Even after a year, the no-fault eviction protections are lacking. There is another option on the table already, the ballot initiative, one that over forty-four thousand people in Sacramento signed on to support and putting in on the ballot. The Sacramento Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Charter Amendment provides real rent control and real relief for renters in our city. It would limit rent increases to two to five percent, an amount far more in line with wage growth. Just cause eviction protections are immediate, instead of being attached to a clause that practically begs abusive landlords to evict tenants just shy of twelve months. The ballot initiative also recognizes the financial realities of no-fault evictions, unlike this deal, and ensures reasonable financial assistance for relocation. In addition, it would establish a democratically-elected rent board to resolve disputes. I don't have any real issue with the stated goals of the proposal today, beyond the fact that it doesn't go far enough. However, I worry about the ramifications of the deal of its past. I'm worried city council might be using this deal to try to shove the ballot initiative under the rug and pray everyone forgets about it. I hope I am wrong, that the city council is not trying to subvert democratic process, and that the initiative will still show up on the ballot next year. So regardless of the outcome of this ordinance, I look forward to casting my vote in support of real rent control and the Sacramento Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Charter Amendment in two thousand twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Les Light.
Hi, I'm with the Sacramento Tenants Union organizing team, and when I go north-north organizing tenants, one of the first things I usually hear is, "Well, I signed that petition." Forty thousand people signed that petition in good faith, believing that they would be able to get rent control for them on the ballot. This plan, based on what we've seen, the behavior of the city council to be in the past, there's every reason to think that this has been carried, what you're proposing is being carried out to undermine and subvert this process. What we need is real rent control. What we need is a democratically-elected rent board, and this is what people have gone, have signed for, and this is what we worked to get on the ballot, and it took a lot of work to get this on the ballot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bobby Ramey Clerk, then Robin Mutcher, then Craig Powell.
Hi. I'm not a polished speaker. I'd like to thank Representative Warren for helping me out. When I was being evicted over an air conditioner, and I had just got out of hospital, my landlord refused to talk to me. He would only talk to Warren's office. And so, you know, I'm looking at this, I don't have all of the A B Cs, but I've got enough sense to see that this right here is not, we need indefinite help. We don't need temporary help. I heard a lot of people talking about temporary this, temporary that. And then the thing I want to say, mayor, you are in, you are in hot water. So far, you gotta take almost six selfies, and I have all the names of the people that you've taken selfies with. And, you know, I heard this guy talking, Dave Tanner, said that he represented seven thousand, so many millions of renters. He don't represent me, okay? The one that was in favor. He don't represent me, okay? So we need, we need a rent control ballot initiative that needs to go, to be voted on. My signature should not be invalidated behind some kind of a bedroom deal. And I think that the article that was in the Sacramento Bee over the weekend was very deceptive. Big old headlines, "Rent Control." Okay? So I don't know who did that, but the bottom line is...
We didn't.
I don't know who did it, but just think about it. The twenty-seven that was in favor, you didn't have, you didn't have, you didn't have any multiple landlords, you didn't have multiple professionals that were coming up. Yeah, you had a lot of union members and a lot of punk folks like me, but you didn't, but on this, the people that are opposing this, I've got enough sense to understand that they know what they're talking about.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you. Next speaker is Robin Mutsler. Next speaker is Robin, then Craig Powell.
Hi, my name's Robin Mutsler, and I am a member of S C I U Local Ten Two One here in Sacramento. I live in Councilmember Hanson's district. My son goes to Williamland Elementary, and I work at Martin Luther King K-8 School in Mr. Jennings' district. So this does not help me. It is not good enough. You've met me, you've met my son at different events, this does not support us. Six percent is not going to work at all. I just recently got a six percent rent increase. That's eighty dollars a month that I can't afford. And to top it off, at the same time, I got laid off working from M L K K-8 School because our school district is in a budget crisis right now. So I am going to pay my rent with a six percent increase on unemployment from the school district that is going to be two-thirds of what I was making. So this, this isn't gonna work. I voted for you, and if I lived in your district, I would vote for you as well. I've met you personally, and I think you're both great men. But again, I can't say it enough, this is not gonna work for me. I'm literally a month away from my son, and I, I don't know where we're gonna live. I really don't. So I worked really hard, like that gentleman before me, getting these signatures for this ballot measure. Put that on the ballot. I ask you to have a date and for you to publicly announce that date before your next meeting, so that we know when that will be on the ballot. You owe that to us, correct? You have to agree that you owe that to us. So please, put it on the ballot, let us know when it's gonna be. I give you thirty days. That's fair. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Craig Powell, then Fernando Nadal, then Denise McCoy.
Craig Powell again with Eye on Sacramento. A couple of things.
A couple of things. One, I want to reiterate what Mr. Stevenson said. The result here today is obviously predetermined, as four council members have already publicly announced their support for the deal, while at least one other council member is known to have informed third parties that they plan to vote for it, providing irrefutable evidence that a majority of the City Council has already made up their minds to vote for this deal. A clear violation of the Brown Act, California's public meaning law, which forbids a majority of the council from even discussing, let alone deciding, on pending legislation outside of a public meeting. As a consequence of this violation, any approval of this deal by this council can and will be voided by the court's pursuit of an invalidation action brought by any member of the public. Your only proper and lawful course at this point is clear. Take this item off calendar immediately and refer to it to your, refer it to your Law and Legislation Committee where it belongs and where your own council rules require for it to go. Additionally, we have four questions of staff regarding the future impacts of this. First, a Stanford study found that the rental housing stock in San Francisco dropped fifteen percent following that city's expansion of rent control. Has your staff assessed such an impact of this ordinance? Secondly, studies have shown that rent control necessarily reduces the value of residential income properties, thereby reducing local governments' property tax revenues. Has your staff assessed such an impact of this ordinance? Studies have shown that the rents of non-rent-controlled properties sharply increase in response to the imposition of rent control on pre-1993 properties. Has your staff assessed such an impact of this ordinance? Finally, any rational property owner will increase rents by the maximum amounts allowed each year on this ordinance, so as to establish a higher base rent, which will in turn determine how much they can increase rent in future years. Consequently, this...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
... substantial rent hikes by owners of rent-controlled properties. Has your staff assessed the impact?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fernando Nadal, then Denise McCoy, then Corinne Van Ravenhorst. And I have about fourteen speakers in fifteen minutes. Fernando, Denise, and then Corinne.
I'm here in regards to your Temporary Political Relief Cover Act. And the reason that I say that is because I was one of those that went out to collect those forty-four thousand signatures, and I promised these people that their votes would count. And when you vote here in the America, your vote's supposed to count. When you, and so, I don't know what happened. I know that a lot of backroom deals goes on, but you know what? We're out, we want it on the table. So number one, the protections, there's no, there's not really no guaranteed protections for, let's say, the seniors, disabled, retired, and people on fixed income. People are being evicted. During the time that I was in the community, at least thirty people every fourteen days was being evicted. And this is like, what, a year ago? I'm sure it's much more now. Apartment buildings kicking out people so that they can renovate. If you work on disability, Social Security, yeah, you're low income, you're out the door so that they can get, uh, charged three or four hundred dollars more. So I'd say, it does nothing to protect the people that, I heard a lot of people that work here, and I appreciate all of us that work, but you know, there's people that are on fixed income that don't have half of what you have. You're paying fifty percent, sixty percent of your money that's going into your pocket. Well, they don't have that, okay? They are in the street. So I say, where's the guarantees for those folks, okay? And the other thing is, we started with a strong coalition. I know that over time, people fade out and things changes, but the ideal and the actual vision of what we needed to do didn't change, only the people saying. So I say that if you are being backed by...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
If you're being backed by big money...
Thank you for your comments.
... for the interest...
Our next speaker is Denise McCoy. Denise McCoy, then Corinne Van Ravenhorst, then Kristin Lopez.
So my name is Denise McCoy, and I do not support this because it will not stop rent gouging. It will only stop rent gouging for people who are renting in properties that were built before 1995. So every single horror story that you just heard in here is happening to somebody now and will happen to somebody tomorrow after this has been passed. But the Sacramento Bee is going to have a big old sign that says Sacramento has rent control. And that's going to be a lie. This is just like, um, do you think that Martin Luther King would have said during the, during the nineteen-fifties bus boycott, "You can discriminate against some black people and not the others"? That's what you're doing here. You are allowing rent gouging for certain people. There, there should, there, no one should be a victim to rent gouging. Why does anybody need to be able to do that? Why are you allowing it? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Corinne.
Good afternoon. While I approve, while I oppose this measure, I still appreciate your time and email communication with staffers. If I have enough time within my two minutes, I want to quote some actual results of economic studies, but to get started, "A real, honest, unbiased study of the facts associated with rent control shows that rent control does not work the way that those supporters say it will work to increase supply of rentals and reduce rent prices. Courage is looking at the facts and doing the right thing regardless of where the pressure is coming from. The city already has a rental program through the RHIP, and this new proposal becomes overly burdensome and redundant on the landlord and increases costs that will in turn increase costs for renters. It has not been shown how this existing program is insufficient and why an additional level of bureaucracy and cost is needed. If this issue really is about housing, creating opportunities and incentives to build housing by making it more affordable and rewarding people who are willing to make sacrifices with their funds and time in order, in order to invest in building and maintaining housing, rather than creating restrictions and incentives to increase rent if landlords are willing to go at the increased risk. The result of this proposal could create an incentive for investors to simply find other, more predictable and safe avenues to invest their resources and time to avoid the added complexities and confusion this could create. When supply, when supply equals demands, costs will naturally level out. In conclusion, the city is trying to incentivize building by encouraging the development of accessory dwellings, which are also known as granny flats. But this proposal could create roadblocks to develop and build ADUs. It is unclear if the new ADUs built will be exempt from this proposal, or if they would then change the existing property from an exempt single-family home to, into a non-exempt multifamily home, thus including both the new developed ADU and the previously exempt single-family home under the purview of this rent control. This creates an incentive to not build ADUs. While I, while I do not think this proposal is good policy, if the city must move forward, I at least encourage you to clarify that both single-family homes and ADUs built on the same property of a single-family home are exempt in the same manner as single-family homes."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Lopez, Leatrice Ramon, then Giovanna Fajaro. Is Kristin here? I don't see Kristin. Leatrice, thank you. Any of you line up? Leatrice, then Giovanna Fajaro, then Lisa Kenton.
I'm a renter. I'm here on, against, on behalf of being against the deal. The majority of people that I know that are for this deal, they're not even renters. They're homeowners. They have, they shouldn't have a say in what happens to us. And a big part of why this deal is so, so bad for the community is because ten percent, they can, landlords can raise the rent ten percent of what, what the renters are already paying, okay? So that's like over a hundred dollars a month per year, okay? So that means over a three-year period, their rent can go up three hundred and fifty dollars a month. That ten percent cap isn't going to help anything. It's not even going to slow down the rate of people being displaced. That's why we need this permanent rent control measure to be put on the ballot. For, like, and on the back of those flyers that I gave you is a photocopy of the initiative that says we got forty-four thousand signatures to get that on the ballot. So that's why we need to keep it there. We need the opportunity to be able to vote for our rights to exist. And housing, housing is a human right. And when we say people over profits, that's not necessarily true, okay? We want landlords to profit. It's people over gross, inhumane profits. That's what we want. That's what we need to survive. This is survival, and I represent all of the renters, all throughout Sacramento that could not be here today because they had to work. Thank you.
Leatrice, and then Giovanna.
Good afternoon, and to all of the, the sun, the setting, I want to say thank the mayor. I do know the mayor, even though he doesn't know me, but we've had...
Well, I know you.
Oh, well, good.
Sure do. It's great to see you.
I want to tell you about, you're saying about having a control. Where I live at, my property manager, she goes up on the rent every month. If it's not up on the rent, she's saying like, "Oh, you owe this? I'm, I'm, I get it." So she's fixing her Cadillac car, where I have no car because the mayor has mine. But from the car, she's taking the car, each month is something different. So are you all talking about, you're going to do this and do that, or you're going to help the poor people? Because I'm very poor, even though I graduated and et cetera from college. Do something to help the poor people, and that's all I have to say to you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Giovanna Fajaro, then Lisa Kenton.
Good afternoon, Giovanna Fajaro with ACE. Again, we helped put together the signatures for the ballot initiative, and let us be clear that ACE and several partners are here today to tell you that we are continuing that fight for real and permanent rent control to keep families in their homes. This is not enough to keep actual families from being displaced, families from the different districts that we're organizing. We were just in the courthouse last week or the last couple of weeks. The low-income families, the children, the senior citizens with the fixed income, this is not going to help them. This is going to help the people that have already started to gentrify our community, that are already willing to pay another rent increase, and this is to win a population vote for the next election. But let it be clear that we are preparing for the ballot initiative. We've had several meetings, and no one has given us a date, and we will continue to fight to put that on the date and sue the city if we need to. Because that is already, as you're here, that is, that is the right of the people to vote for rent control ballot initiative. The other thing is, this has too many flaws. This is something that you barely presented in a two, five-minute presentation, and it's not going to help keep families in their homes. It is a lot of promises, and it's going to get more families evicted, thinking that they actually have rent control in Sacramento, but they don't. The city of Culver passed three percent permanent rent control yesterday. You guys could do it. You guys need to be brave and stand up and pass permanent protections for the families here in Sacramento. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Kenton. Following Lisa is Jefferson McGee, then Shay Deloitte.
I'm a sixty-two-year-old senior citizen on SSDI, make less than a thousand dollars a month. My landlord got pissed off at me because one of the women in the building, she's psychotic, tried to stab me with the screwdriver. And that's when I told him, they called the police, and they wouldn't take her because she's psychotic. And I told, called him and told him that the police were going to start charging him for calls because the people calling there, and he raised my rent two days later over twenty percent without a sixty-day notice. And then I argued with him about it, and he says, "You're bipolar. That's why you're angry all the time," which I think is discrimination. And so after that, I come home and there's a sixty-day notice on my door. Now, I'm a tenant that pays my rent on time. I've been there six years. I pay my rent on time. I never caused trouble, except I called the police on this woman. So my rent was raised over twenty percent. And I had to get a lawyer from a nursing, I'm sorry, I'm a nurse. I had to get a lawyer to keep me in the house because he gave me the sixty-day notice two weeks before he's having major surgery, where I would be in a care home for two months. I got a lawyer, and they sent a letter, and he has hit me. But I continue, five-fifty is almost two-thirds of what I make. I, a car payment, to live in the car is cheaper, and that's what I'm going to have to do. And what are you guys going to do about, how many homeless people were in there when you were, you were going around giving these ideas that, any of you homeless, any of you rent? Are you about ready to be homeless? I'm sorry, I'm angry. I am a target in a car. I'm disabled, and I'm a senior citizen. I go out there homeless. I am a target for rape, murder, whatever. I am angry!
Thank you for your comments.
Help me! Help me! I'm in a car in two months.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, hold on, hold on, please. Hold on. The, the hour allotted is up. However, there are five speakers left on the opposition side, and without objection, I'm going to allow everybody who came to sign up to please speak in opposition, okay? Five more people.
Next speaker is Jefferson McGee, then Shay Deloitte, then Erica.
My name is Jefferson McGee. I'm with ACE. I think, you know, anything for tenants is a good jo, is a hundred percent more than what tenants have now. So I only oppose this for the fact that we have a ballot initiative out there, and we're not getting any attention, not being told the date that it's going to be put on the ballot so we can prepare. This is a, a start, but let's finish it. Let's get this ballot initiative on the, a, a, a date for it, and let's vote, and then let the people decide real rent control and what it means to them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shay, then Erica, then Chad Osborne. Any of you?
Shay here.
I don't see Shay. Erica, then Chad Osborne, then Corinne Hamilton.
Shay and Corinne Hamilton, please come up now, because we're, we're beyond the hours.
So I believe Shay's not, is, is this Erica?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then Chad Osborne, then Corinne Hamilton.
I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to speak, because I was actually sitting there prepared not to, because I know this is very heated. What I would just like to say, I am a member of the Sacramento Tenants Union, I am a renter. I have a master's degree in public administration, I work for the state, I can barely afford my rent right now, and I live in District Five. I am also a member of the Sacramento Tenants Union. We do not, I don't want to say, we support the rent relief that's given, but it's not enough. I think what's more disappointing is that people like me who just got involved in the voting started to actually believe in democracy and the democratic practice less than two years ago. These, these events that we, the fact that there's forty-four thousand signatures that qualifies, and we still do not know when this is going to be on the ballot. Please do not disappoint us. What I do want to share with everyone, and I hope... Sorry. Joseph A. Jeffrey petitioner versus Superior Court of Orange County. The proponents of the Fair Initiative had turned over twenty-two thousand signatures to the city clerk. The proponents of the Sacramento City's Charter Amendment turned over forty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-five signatures. There is no question that supporters had obtained enough signatures to put the Fair Initiative on the ballot. The question is which ballot. After city clerk examined petition and filed them with the City Council, Council had ministerial duty to order at once special election within specified timeframe. This is a blatant attempt, if you use this as a tool to undermine our votes. Please give us a date, please.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Chad Osborne, Corinne Hamilton, then Audrey Walker.
Hi, my name is Chad, and I'm...
Hi, my name is Chad, and I'm representing the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. Um, I'd just like to say that this plan is blatantly classist. So who are you serving? You don't have the working, the working-class people's best interests in mind. You have the real estate industry's best interests in mind. So the people who are on fixed incomes, social security, working two to three minimum wage jobs, Steve Hansen, talking to you. This helps middle-class people who can afford the extra $100 to $200 a month of that a 10% cap would provide. So this overrides the democratic process. It ignores the 44,000 people in Sacramento who signed and supported a real rent control initiative for 2020. Place it on the ballot today because you legally have to. Um, I want you to know that whatever happens today, it's not going to detract us from the fight as renters to pass the 2020 Rent Control Ballot Initiative because we will vote yes, because renters in Sacramento deserve better. And if you're truly worried about the livelihoods of working-class people and keeping them in their homes between now and 2020, then you should pass an emergency rent freeze protection. We did it in Santa Cruz because when people are paying 60% or more of their income on rent, and homelessness has jumped up 52% since January of 2017, then this is a definition of a crisis, and you need to treat it as one. People are getting evicted and thrown out today, and a 10% cap isn't helping anyone who's getting evicted right now. So place the Rent Control Ballot Initiative on the 2020 ballot. And as the capital of California, we should be leading the state in protecting renters. Thank you.
Corinne Hamilton, Audrey Walker, and Kevin Bolts.
Hi, um, I, my name is Corinne Hamilton. I'm a resident of Sacramento. I'd like my testimony to be moved into the, the neutral category. I recently was faced with a choice. I, I could either move to a month-to-month lease or sign another year-long lease. If I went with a month-to-month lease, my rent would have raised by over $800. If I went with the year-long lease, I would get a 10% rent increase, which was $100. And that's almost more than I can afford. Next year, it will be more than I can afford. I'm also here today as a member of the Sacramento chapter of the ACLU of Northern California. California has immense economic inequality. Despite having the fifth-largest economy in the world, approximately 20% of Californians are classified as in poverty, the highest in the country other than Washington DC. The poverty rate is even higher for the youngest Californians, with 25% of children under five impoverished. Households living in poverty are disproportionately black, Latinx, and indigenous. California's high poverty rate and homelessness rates cannot be explained by lack of jobs. Rather, half of households living at or below federal poverty, the federal poverty line, spend more than half of their income on housing, leaving little left for other basic necessities. As a result, unaffordable housing threatens millions of families and housing instability with, with housing instability and the risk of homelessness. So despite having the fifth-largest economy in the world, California has the highest rate of homelessness in the nation. Therefore, it should not come as a surprise. Sacramento has a growing homelessness population when, when as the 10th largest city in the state, we do not provide renters adequate protections for housing stability, a, a basic need. The city can and must do better when basic needs are met, like fair and affordable housing protections. People are able to stay in their homes and provide for their families. Thank you.
Next speaker is Audrey Walker, and Kevin Bolts is our final speaker.
Hi, my name is Adri Walker. I walked around last year gathering signatures for this petition. You think you've heard a lot of moving stories, and you think you understand why you're, you're working to get this, something done. But I walked for three months, five and six days a week. I've heard so many more stories than you all. Like, the impact is, is huge. And the people that I talked to, this didn't go far enough. They were signing, saying, well, will this bring my rent down? And I said, no. Unfortunately, I don't think there's anything we could possibly get through at this point in time that will bring rents down. But this is what we've got. This is the bare minimum. This is what we're fighting for as our first step. And now you guys are taking that, and you're taking it away. You're trying to pass a pale ghost of our, like, very first step. And we need something permanent. We want to vote on our permanent ballot initiative. These 44,000 people signed for a lasting solution. It's not a balance between landlords and tenants. The landlords that I talked to, the, the ones that weren't the slumlord landlords, because you can tell, like, you can tell when you're talking to people. The mom-and-pop landlords, they were for this. They're like, I already don't gouge my tenants. Of course, I want to, like, sign on to this. Everybody deserves protections that I provide. This is about corporate interests, corporate rental industry versus your community and your people, the population you all serve. You're playing into their hands if you sign this today because, like people have said, SacB will say, oh, this is rent control, and it's going to cause an uproar because it's not what people are expecting. And then when the chance to actually make good, people are going to vote against their own interests like they did voting no on repealing Costa Hawkins. We need something to protect everyone. Support and believe in the people that you represent.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our final speaker is Kevin Bolts.
So the first gentleman who spoke said that this is a 6% cap plus the cost of living, which brings us about to eight and a half. That's in the thing. You said in 2017, 8.6 was the rental increase. So 8.6 gave us the wasteland that is our current homeless situation, and that's the best you can give us in this deal. That's disgusting. I worked for the Signature Collection campaign for the first few months and only stopped due to physical demands. I was nine months removed from ankle surgery, and I made a choice between marching for signatures and marching for Stephon Clark. I cared about what was being done, and that is an understatement to say so. I heard every day in collecting those signatures, and nothing was more important to me. The labor I was done by myself and many others was sold out by a labor union. And as a child of a 28-year teamster, local 896, and a Fairfield Unified School teacher, I'm disgusted. Over 44,000 signatures were collected from registered SAC voters who earned the right to vote on that initiative without distraction. I would say the people in charge who spoke first in favor of this were not the ones collecting signatures. They were the ones waiting for us back at the office after we had collected them. Steve said we'd be one of the first cities in the Central Valley with a rent control initiative. I don't understand why that's important. Richmond is the gold standard on rent control, and I don't understand why we're not shooting for that. Who cares what our geographic region is? Today, Voices River City told us that Sacramento developer Mark Friedman gave Daryl Steinberg a maximum $3,500 campaign donation, and his mother, Mary Ann, and wife, Margie, gave the same. These three donations make up 9% of the mayor's total 2020 campaign donations, 10% from one developer, and you wonder why this is the best deal we can get. We also learned that Steve received over $34,000 from anti-rank-control entities, and this comprised 45% of his campaign donations. You act like you can't do anything, and you are the system. If you stop tending to these people who pay you, maybe they'd stop acting in the way they do and kicking people out on the street for profit. You are what allows it to keep going because you reward their behavior. Stop acting like you're powerless. It's disgusting.
No.
Yes, she did. She turned it right here. You can shut up and get paid for two more minutes.
Mr. Mayor, our one hour is complete. Thank you.
That's all.
I turned in a speaker slip.
And we took one hour of testimony.
The city clerk said...
We took one hour of testimony, Mr. Mayor.
No, no. Last, la... Last speaker. Go ahead. Two minutes.
So, um, it's interesting. I think only a couple of people have brought up the fact that this is at a 2:00 PM meeting instead of a 5:00 PM meeting, which is one that people who are part of the working poor, such as myself, are unable to make. I was only able to make it today because the things that I committed myself to were outside of this timeframe. So you, you continue to try and do things in a very shady manner and not include the people who are directly impacted by the things that you were speaking of. We see you. You need to knock it off. It's unsurprising that Steve Hansen over here helped lead this effort. During the first half of 2019, he received $18,752 from interest specifically fighting against rent control and $15,600 from groups with a vested interest in fighting against tenants' rights. That accounted for 45% of his total campaign contributions at that point in time. In the second half, I see that both of you are not listening, both Steve Hansen and Daryl Steinberg. Second half of 2018, Steve got $20,000, which accounted from these same special interests, which accounted for 70% of the contributions during that time. So we see that you're doing this because you're being paid by special interest groups to do this. You are subverting the democratic process. This is unconstitutional. This is unethical. This is immoral. This is not going to stop the land grab and serial forced displacement of gentrification. This is not going to help the explosive increase in homelessness that you somehow found a way to adjust the numbers on this year for the point-in-time count to make it look like it's not as significant as it is. You need to do more.
Okay. We're going to now turn this, we're going to now turn this back to the city council after two hours and 15 minutes of, of public testimony. And I would like to begin with Councilmember Hansen.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to everybody who spoke, for or against. I know that this is a very passionate issue. It's a complicated issue, but it also hopefully will make significant progress today if we pass this measure. And I know we will make very meaningful progress. I forgot to thank a couple of people. Kathy Cresswell from Sacramento Housing Alliance did a great job on this, helping, as did Veronica Beatty and Omega Brewer. I meant to mention earlier Omega. I'm sorry if I didn't say that. But also our city attorney, Susanna Colawood, and Cheryl Patterson. They did just tremendous work leading the effort here. And what Fabrizio Sasso said earlier about let's not make perfection the enemy of the good, that is a ve... This is a very substantial benefit to people who are feeling burdened by rent, who are afraid of being kicked out, who face significant increases. I have had people come to me and tell me about 20%, 30% increases. This stops those. There was a woman, Lisa Kenton, who spoke against this, talked about a 20% increase. This would have stopped that, and she also talked about being evicted. The protections here are already vesting. If you've been in your unit for 12 months, this covers you. If you have a rent increase that comes after July 1st, it is included in the cap. This is not something that, you know, despite the people who would like to see the ballot measure, this is not so imperfect that we should not pass it. And I'd encourage you to work with us to make it better as we go along. We'll have an annual report every year. But like any ordinance, we can revisit it. And that's the beauty of not passing a ballot measure where you need to go back to the ballot to make changes. This truly does help people. There was a young man who came up to me at a wedding reception. He had just received a rent increase. This will help him because he was facing a 30% increase on a building where the landlord wasn't going to make a change. I have had people call me about evictions for things that had nothing to do with their performance as a tenant. This will help them. And earlier today, when, whether it was Yvonne or Margarita or any of the people who worked on this, Sarah, and I'm glad to see your daughter here tonight, today, they brought forward very substantial concerns, and Michelle, on behalf of the, the people who spoke for it and on behalf of the people who they knew were going to be against it, but they wanted to do something good because today is a day that can make a meaningful difference in the lives of people who are affected by this ordinance. We can wait for March or November of next year, have a $7 million fight over the ballot measure. Maybe it passes, maybe it doesn't. We can, we can have a pitched battle over perfection, but we can do something very, very good here today if we pass this ordinance. And I know it's for five years. Five years is a long time, but maybe it's not long enough. We have a provision in here that we come back with a full report prior to the expiration so we can evaluate whether to continue it or to do something else. And if I know anything about our community, people will mobilize, they will organize, and they'll try to figure out what the best thing for our community is, and we'll just have to work together through that. I do think in the end, too, somebody said Sacramento, we've talked about our diversity, but when I see the working people here, whether you're in a union or not, I also believe at my core, this community is an egalitarian community. Your merits, your hard work should speak, and we want you to be part of this community and not be displaced because we have not taken action. That is a profoundly different thing about our city versus a lot of cities. Yes, the people can come up here and criticize me by name because I've talked to them. They know me. And they, you know, that, that, I, I don't get to get away from this, just like no one on this dais gets to get away from this. As we work through this, we're not removed, we are involved. And that was the commitment we made to come back with the coalition, with the stakeholders, to work through this and to come up with a solution that makes meaningful progress. And so I'm very proud today to do this, but it's not without, and I'll just remind us, we, through the leadership of the council, and I proposed a $100 million affordable housing gap financing bond. That is significant. We need to build more affordable housing. And when I say this, I don't blame the mayor, but the legislature did away with redevelopment, and funding for affordable housing was a key component of it. It actually went away because the cities themselves sued over what the legislature did. So it was not the legislature that did away with the affordable housing money. It was the cities who didn't want to accept that they had to participate in that budget process. I would also say, in here, we're including a first step in helping fund Sacramento self-help housing, who gives tenants guidance. So many of our tenants call them, asking for advice. This money that we've included, and will be coming back through an actual allocation through the city managers, report back in 30 days, will help provide tenant education, tenant support. And I hope our program, once it's up and running, does even more. The last thing I'd say is, the city of Sacramento, in the entire state, is the most pro-housing city. LA is not building housing. San Francisco is not building housing. We have produced more units of housing in the city of Sacramento than the city of LA as a whole. We are not going to stop trying to produce housing. During the recession, we had a surplus of housing, and prices dropped. Rents stayed low. We came out of that into scarcity because we hadn't built much during the recession. And we see Sacramento not only is blossoming because our economy has rebounded and our state employees are, are not being furloughed, and those cuts haven't happened, but people are fleeing the Bay Area to come here. And this is part of why we have to put in the stabilization policies that are before us today. 6% plus CPI, maybe that's not the right number, but that's a fair number to start from, I believe. The vesting of tenant eviction protections has already begun, if you've been in your units. And I think this, above all, these two things combined work well to tell those families who are in the 40, how many, 42,000? About 42,000 units? That's more than 42,000 people, that we have done something good to help them. Maybe we can't help everybody with this one fell swoop, but we're going to continue to talk about what we can do to build more affordable housing, to protect tenants. This is not the end of the story. This is a continuation, and I thank those people who've been involved in it. Mr. City Manager, I have one question for you. We had several of the commenters request us make the ordinance effective in 30 days. Well, I know implementation will take far longer than that. You're coming back in 30 just to set the fee and to begin to lay out the authorities. Is it possible that if we make this ordinance effective in 30 days that we, we can figure out how to handle complaints and other things should they arise? And, and I will say, I believe it was Michelle or Sarah who said it's going to be messy, and they know it's going to be messy, but they're asking for that because we don't want that time period for people to be taken advantage of.
You are correct. We're going to be back in 30 days with the fee ordinance piece, but to start hearing some of the complaints, if you will, will be a real challenge with the infrastructure we have in place now.
So the recourse, I believe, Madam City Attorney, is if we make this ordinance effective in 30 days, people would have to use other resources, whether it's their rights through the legal services or through Sacramento Housing Alliance self-help to, to resolve this. Is that correct?
Correct, and the ordinance would be effective, and so it would be a defense also for any eviction that they'd be able to say, well, that the, the law's in place.
I, I would like to make an amendment to my motion, passing the staff recommendation along with the other guidance, just to reduce the ordinance effective period from 60 days to 30 days. And I do this, and I hope that my second concurs. I do this because I got a call yesterday from somebody whose landlord read about this, and they began a 60-day period to evict. And I just want to make sure that we send a very clear message that while these protections are retroactive, that we are not going to tolerate anybody taking advantage of this window of opportunity to do, do anything that further hurts tenants, whether through eviction or through rent increases.
Okay. Councilman Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to the maker of the motion, I'll go ahead and, and accept that change to the motion here. First, I want to start off by thanking all of the, the folks who are putting a lot of time and energy in this. time and energy in this. I wanna thank my colleague Steve Hanson for, you know, really taking a leadership role in this, and my colleague, Councilmember Rick Jennings as well here for, for coming together and, and, you know, we gave it a shot. And first, if you don't try the first time, then try again, you know? And I appreciate that. I also wanna thank, you know, I see still out here, Margarita and Yvonne and Sarah and Michelle out there who are, who are working on this. Dave is still here and Kalen, I don't, she's not here anymore, but I also wanna thank all them for all the time and energy for putting this together. And I, I wanna thank our city staff and our, our attorney's office, who, who helped a lot of guidance here. And a special thanks to Dennis and, and Aaron in my office, who, when we first started this, she was on maternity leave. And then when we finished this, a big thanks to Matt, who went on paternity leave. And so we've had, in that timeframe, you know, expanded our family here. So a big shout out and a thank to all the staff who, who put a lot of time into this. We, we couldn't do it without everybody pulling together at the staff level, at the organizing level, at the community level, at the, at the, with all of the stakeholders involved. As somebody mentioned earlier today, you know, we, we want a Sacramento for all. And as our city begins to flourish and continue to grow and all of these great amenities that are, that are happening today, we voted on some, this, earlier this week, we celebrated a monumental expansion of the convention center to bring more revenue to our city. We wanna make sure that, at the same time, we're not displacing our own Sacramento residents, so that our own residents are able to stay here and benefit from that success. I know friends who grew up in the Mission, who can no longer participate and live there in their family history and the culture that was part of there that's been affected by it. I don't want Sacramento to fall victim to those, to those issues. And I think we can do that with this proposal today. One of the things that is in this proposal is making sure that we recognize that many tenants were, were being gouged. There were a lot of residents who were getting well above 10% increases. And this is a modest proposal that addresses those needs from those families and also allows and, and is recognizing of the need for more construction. The fact is, in this room here, we have the solution to our housing crisis. We have in this room, not only the tenant advocates, we have the construction workers and the building trades who are going to build the housing. We have the builders who came in here and are, are gonna be the, the ones responsible for the development. And we have also, on the retail side, the realtors who are gonna be on that part of the housing. We have representatives from our policy units here, who are helping us make the appropriate land use decisions, our great economic development staff, our public works, and our planning community development department. Interestingly enough, today in this room, we have everybody needed to address our housing challenge. So it's, what I find important here is that we are coming together to find a solution to the first step in this. The point of supporting also Sacramento self-help housing, I think we made this, this point, I wish we could have done it sooner, but I'm glad that we're moving forward now and making sure we're appropriating it and giving guidance to folks. The, I, I'm, I'm supporting the second of the motion now because I do believe that the affirmative defense component of this proposal is important, making sure that we're providing people proper notice and not ending up with an unlawful detainer, which can be a lasting mark on a renter. I know the, I know when I was a janitor and renting at the time, and there were, you know, friends who received the unlawful detainer, it became a challenge to ever, you know, find a, a new place. So I think that, for that reason, I'll, I'll support this, that second of the change here today and to make sure that we're providing an opportunity for notice. Again, the issue here today is making sure that we provide a, a solution to our challenge today, but not cripple and stay focused on the future. We have to continue to be aggressive on pushing policies that are gonna promote more multifamily housing. We, that is going to be our solution. Thoughtful policies to making sure that our vacant land near transit corridors is used appropriately so we can build more. And having a better understanding that we need a more diverse supply of housing at all levels for everyone. I wanna again thank Councilmember Hanson for this. And lastly, to thank our mayor. You know, I say he, he started some trouble, but I call, my, my Cruz Ray Noso, you know, who I admire very much, said he was a professional troublemaker. And so to that, I do, I give it to you in a, in a, in a supporting role. Thank you for causing some trouble, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I'm gonna be supporting the motion today. Thank you, my colleagues, for this great proposal.
Without a little bit of trouble, it's very rare that anything good happens. And, and if it's not painful, corollary, and, and a little bit messy, it probably wasn't worth spending so much time on in the first place. So, thank you. Councilman Warren. I'm sorry, did I?
Am I up? Oh, yeah, I'm up.
You are, okay.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I wanna, first of all, start off by thanking my colleagues here on the council for a lot of work and the people they work with. I think we all recognize that housing is one of the biggest issues facing our city. And I think there's a lot more that we could be doing. I am a, a real estate developer, for some of you that don't know, and I've been developing housing for over 30 years. And a lot of housing I've developed was affordable housing early on in my career. There was an organization called SVOC that was an offshoot of an organization that was started by a gentleman named Sal Alinsky back in Chicago that organized and helped. One of the major components was to provide quality housing, and, and I did that for a number of years. So I've seen a lot of affordable housing. I think I have a pretty good understanding as to how it works. Councilman Gere, or Vice Mayor Gere, made a statement, and, and it was, it was mostly correct when he said that we have a lot of what we need to help solve these housing issues here in the room with us today. But one of the missing factors is, we don't have capital here in this room. And we need capital, we need to attract capital to Sacramento in order to produce more housing units that will ultimately have the effect that we want. Supply and demand. We have a tremendous amount of demand and we have a restricted amount of supply. The dynamics will not change until we increase the supply. And if we implement policies that put Sacramento at a disadvantage, then we are going to be a less attractive market for others and capital sources to come here. Now, I am not a, I'm not going to support the ordinance that's on the agenda tonight. I would be more inclined to support the ballot initiative. But let me, let, let, let me tell you why, though. Because then, the entire, if, if it's a state initiative, then the entire state would be playing by the same rules or similar rules. If we pick on Sacramento, we will become less attractive for capital, and I know, I know what you're saying, it's a local. But I'm saying, ultimately, this could have the opposite effect of what we intend. I, I do not believe that the ordinance as written is going to produce the desired results. I also think that when you tell private capital what they can do with their money, it turns them off. I don't, I don't think that that is a, a prudent way to encourage development. In District 2, there's another initiative, another item coming up on the agenda, and it is a, a CHW project that's being proposed on Arden Way. It's a good project. It's being built for people that make between 40 and 60% of the area median income. People that make $25,000 a year up to approximately $50,000. It will be the kind of housing we wanna promote here in Sacramento. It's about a $35 million project. In order for them to do that, they needed government assistance, but they need a lot of capital, of private capital as well, to be attracted to this, to this market. And, and I believe that we're going to send a signal that suggests that we are attempting to regulate what people do with their own private capital. And I don't think that's healthy for us. I think there are better ways for us to do what we need to do. I think also we're creating more bureaucracy. We're gonna make it more cumbersome for property owners to, 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 to manage their properties. And who are they gonna, I mean, ultimately, that's gonna be taken out on the renters. I think it's going to be more tense relationships between property owners and renters. I'm hoping that it won't happen. I'm also hoping that there's something I may be missing, you know? And this may ultimately be more of a benefit than, than I believe it's going to be, but, you know, as it exists today, I could not, you know, I cannot support it. The other thing is that, just on the other side of Business 80 next to Arden Fair Mall, there's an additional 400-unit apartment complex being built, pure market rate. But it is the kind of property and project that, on one side of the freeway, and literally, they're gonna have a huge variance in rent. So we're gonna have everything from people making $25,000 a year up to people that might make $100,000 in two different projects, very close in proximity. And I think we need to be about trying to, to make it easier for both of those types of investments to exist because ultimately, adding more housing stock into our market will help reduce, reduce this tension and the escalation of rents, and ultimately, I think, create a more healthy Sacramento. Last, I'll just say that this is not an easy issue. This is a very challenging issue. And we, and we have others that, that we're being faced with. Homelessness is a huge issue. I think that we need to do more. I think that in addition to, to a balance between property owners and tenants, we need to do more for the homeless community. I think it is a huge, huge issue for the city of Sacramento and likely to get worse. And so I know all of us on the council are working very hard at it, but I think it's time for us to have another discussion about multiple ways to deal with that element of housing, including a safe ground in the city of Sacramento. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn the mic back over to you, sir, but I will, I will not be supporting this, this ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Schneer.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief because I think a lot of folks have said what needs to be said here. I, I do wanna thank my colleagues for taking this on. I was meeting with a number of young people today, and we were talking a lot about persistence. And this has been a case of persistence. And for those of you who've been working on this with these guys, a lot of persistence. So thank you for that. I, I had an interesting email over the weekend where someone accused me of being in the pocket of, if I voted for this, I was in the pocket of developers and unions. And I thought, 17 years of doing this, that's the first time I've gotten that. I thought that was pretty interesting. But I, I think it actually says, I think it actually said, I don't have any contributions this year, I don't even, I'm not raising any money. So, but I, I think what it says is not everyone's gonna be happy, but we got to a compromise that can move the ball forward, and I appreciate all the work that's been done at this dais to move us forward. I, I also wanna say, I appreciate, I've talked to a lot of those who are opposed to this, who, to an organization, have said, you know, once we understand what's happening, we, once we get through this, let's work together on housing. And that's the long-term solution here, is that we need to really increase the stock of affordable housing in our community. I know Mr. Gere and I are working on that in a couple of neighborhoods and corridors, and I know we all will, and, and the $100 million is gonna seed, I think, hopefully, a huge expansion of, of housing in this community, because that's what we need to get to. That's the long-term solution. I was opposed to rent control in, in many of its forms, but, you know, I've been convinced certainly that, in, in listening to people's stories over and over again, that this is something we need to do and that we need to do now. We can't let people suffer the way they have been. I know it's taken a while, but we don't always move quickly. We try to get it right. And when we don't, we come back and continually tweak it to make sure we get to there. So again, I just wanna thank everyone. I will be supporting this. I look forward to really understanding how it's being implemented. I know that there's gonna be a lot of challenges for our staff to get up and, and run as quickly as possible on this. And I hope that those who are for it and those who are not for it today will stay engaged because we can make this something that is not San Francisco or Richmond or other places. We can make this something that is Sacramento, that works for our community and works for the people in our community. So again, thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. I've mentioned your Councilmember Harris, and I'm gonna have a comment, and then we're gonna vote. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, this is an issue that raises a lot of passion. Certainly, people who have been displaced for their homes feel this in a very visceral way, in a very threatening way. And you can understand why they would want to take fairly strong action to create protections for themselves and others. On the other hand, you know, landlords are fearful that their investments will be threatened and they will be restricted in the way that they run their properties. We have some very bad landlords in Sacramento. We also have many, many very excellent landlords. And it's important to keep that all in mind. I've heard a lot of hyperbole today in the public testimony that really reflects the kind of passion that's attached to this issue. Like my colleague Ellen Warren, I've been involved in housing my whole life as a general contractor. I know a little bit about the marketplace as well, and the fact of the matter is that because of the recession, we really did not build dwelling units in this city for about six years. And it put us really behind the eight ball. And the answer to this question truly is, I believe, inventory. If we build a lot more units, we will come out of this. But there's a stressful period, that is the interim, where people are actually getting hurt. This particular ordinance that's been proposed by my three colleagues, I see it as a stopgap measure, just a way to ease the pain in their interim, but we have taken a lot of steps to encourage housing development. Just in District 3, I was just looking at some of the, some of the projects coming up. So in the rail yards, there will be 210 affordable units and starting next year. There's the Twin Rivers Development, so the replacing, replacement of the county housing project, Os Rios, ultimately will be 487 dwelling units, roughly 350 will be affordable. There's more planned in Park Bridge, in South Natomas, in Township 9, in the River District. Just tonight, on the, on the consent calendar, we approved giving a loan to CH Works to build workforce housing on Arden. We, we've instituted or, or made use of Opportunity Zone. Now, that is going to induce developers to get involved, and it's already happening in District 3, especially around Township 9, which is gonna be a very big supply of housing. The point I'm trying to make is, when I got elected, if I could get 100 or 200 units built in my district in a year, I felt pretty flush. And now I'm thinking in the thousands. So relief is on the way. And I do not believe that this particular ordinance is going to drive developers to the exits. It's just simply not that stringent that it would have that effect. And it follows Costa Hawkins, you know? It has a lot to do with timeframe. Developers are still very interested in the Sacramento market, and I, I tend to disagree with my colleague Ellen Warren on, on that score. I do not believe that this is gonna be a deterrent to the role that we're on to create the real fundamental solution to our housing problems, which is getting a lot more inventory into the marketplace. I do have a question for Steve Hanson. So David Schuh has a bill coming up that addresses these concerns as well. If that is instituted, how would it affect this ordinance?
Mr. Harris, I think that question depends on a lot of legislating, legislative negotiating that I, and I don't know if anyone here is really privy to, but at this point, the legislature has about three or four weeks left, sorry, four weeks left in its session. And so we'll know that probably in that And so we'll know that probably in that period of time than whether the governor signs it.
Well, the point being that we might have to adjust to comply with state law if that's adopted.
Absolutely.
And that's the thing that, Steve brought this up, that ordinances can be changed, and we can change them relatively quickly if we need to do. I have one concern, and that is that if you are a landlord and you have multifamily units, if you want to rehab those units one by one, and you have to displace a tenant, I'm not exactly sure, given the way this ordinance is written, whether that would be a deterrent to somebody to, to go ahead and invest in a unit, and want, have the need to raise the rent for that particular unit, and the first right of return. I'm not quite sure. Can you address that?
I may need the help of Cheryl. But I believe under the ordinance, because this is one of those detailed things that I had to really get my head around, that a landlord can, for the purposes of renovation like you're discussing, have a tenant move out. They need to give 120 days' notice. And then they have to offer, and Michelle will tell me if I'm right or wrong, Cheryl, they have to offer them the right to return. I don't believe, unless the unit has been withdrawn for more than 12 months, that they can change the rent from the prior base rent. But we did create this so that the, the rent would not be set so low that landlords wouldn't have to be able to, so they would be able to make these changes, but also they could petition through a hearing officer if they felt they needed a higher increase to support that. I think there's several aspects to your question that make it more factually complicated.
I was going to say, I couldn't say any better. You're great.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, so, a somewhat confusing answer to a multifaceted question. But that is a concern. And I, I understand that, you know, through the hearing process, a landlord could adjust the rent while inviting the same tenant back. That may have a detrimental effect, you know, in terms of people rehabbing older units, and this, of course, applies to older units. We'll have to see how that plays out. If it does have that effect, then I would certainly want to change that moving forward. But all in all, because of the difficulties that many renters have experienced in the last year and a half, two years, even three years going back, I think that this potentially can help us in the short term. Will do very little damage in the long term, and it is flexible, in fact, in terms of adjusting to the market, and seeing how the increased inventory, which is imminent, and going to be coming online in the next two years, see how it affects our marketplace. And hopefully, that will in fact bring the fundamental change that will offer relief to tenants for a long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Councilman Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate the group who put this together. I know you put a lot of hard work into this, and you studied this issue for quite a while. And my colleague, Councilmember Warren, has a great deal of experience in developing houses. I received this on Thursday evening, and have to vote on it on Tuesday evening. And the mayor has kept me busy with some other things since Thursday. So I'm sure it's good. I know that there are things that are for and against any type of rent control. I would have liked to have had some time to talk to more people and study it. So, Mr. Mayor, I will be abstaining.
Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank my colleagues who put a lot of time into this, especially you, Councilmember Hansen. I know you tried really hard. And from what I can gather on this, we just have to start somewhere. Obviously, something needs to be done. That's, that seems very obvious, sitting here, listening to people come, and us trying to, you know, knock down problems one week at a time, one complex at a time, isn't working. So we have to do something. I'm really sympathetic to the group that feels that it's not enough. And I'm also concerned with some of the things that Councilmember Warren has said about drying things up. You know, my district sat in a building moratorium for eight years, and it was the new growth area. And it now includes big chunks of Councilmember Hansen and Councilmember Harris's districts. And that meant for almost a decade, the city didn't build any new houses in its new growth area. And just let me put that into perspective for you. This actually won't even apply to my district, because none of it existed before 1995. That's how much growth you missed out on in that decade. That's a lot of houses. That's a lot of apartments. I have 11 low-income inclusionary apartment complexes. It means we haven't been able to build that. So that's a lot of growth that we need to catch up on, and I think this is a starting point. My only ask, and really the only reason why I chimed in, is just to say that whenever we do a policy like this, where we're, you know, jumping into the deep end and just giving something a try, is that we have to study it as we go. And we have to give ourselves permission to come back and make changes. It may not be strong enough, as many people have said. It may also be too strong, as some people have said. It may also conflict with something that the state does in the next six months to a year. So we're going to have to keep an eye on all of those moving parts. And our city staff, we're going to be reliant on you to come back and tell us, hey, this is working, or this isn't working, or, you know, somehow, we're going to need to keep those stats. So I am ready to support this tonight, because I want to support something. And I want to try to help people in Sacramento feel more stable in their homes, but I also want to keep, keep our options open to adjust appropriately as we move forward.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I, I'm glad that Councilmember Ashby brought up that point. One thing that's important about this ordinance, that, that we heard from all the stakeholders, was the data collection. And one thing that is important about why we need to move forward with this ordinance is because we will actually have, as we move forward, real information that is relevant to Sacramento, not hearing from what happened in Richmond or Oakland. And, and I, I want to thank Councilmember Carr for always making sure that we're setting up goals and benchmarks, and, and understanding what is our outcome level. I think with this, this data collection, where we will be able to benchmark ourselves and understand what outcomes are. And it could be issues about what Councilmember Harris mentioned, effects on quality of apartments. It also could be that we aren't moving the needle on, on, on the, on our issues. But the important thing is, is we'll have real data with Sacramento. And the last thing I wanted to also make, make sure that I forgot to mention for our city manager, is to provide direction to staff to work with the stakeholders through the implementation process, and making sure that we're keeping them in the loop as, I know it's going to be a messy process, as someone mentioned, if we're going to do this, but I'd like to make sure that that communication happens. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of final comments. There was a lot of conversation tonight about the substance appropriately, but also about the process, and about the initiative process. And I think it is important for those out there who made a lot, made their comments about the process, that I provide a little bit of an explanation here. The initiative process, of course, is an appropriate outlet for the people, but it's not an absolute. And be careful what you wish for when you use the initiative process, because you could win it all, or you could lose it all. When I was in the, my last year in the legislature in 2014, I authored a major bill that was signed by the governor, that allows the initiative proponents to negotiate with the legislature. And if they could come to a compromise agreement, the initiative proponents, not the legislature, could withdraw the initiative. That same law was later, after I left, applied to local government initiatives as well. And so, in this particular instance, the initiative proponents and the opponents of the initiative, at least some of the opponents of the initiative, sat down together as the process was absolutely intended, to see if they could come to a compromise, recognizing that if the initiative that was going to go to the ballot passed, it would arguably be negative for one side. And if it failed, there would be absolutely no relief at all for tenants. And so there's nothing nefarious at all about the way this occurred. It's exactly the way the process is intended, and changed, actually, because prior to my bill in 2014, once an initiative was submitted with the proper signatures, it was all or nothing. And in fact, those of you who don't love the proposal here from the tenant perspective, I think you should take some satisfaction in the fact that it was the initiative, in part, that pushed everybody to the negotiating table, that leads to the relief that's in front of us, which everyone acknowledges is good. Some just said, it isn't good enough. Well, we've got nothing now, which lends to the substance. Let's get back to this. The rent gouging piece is important, but I will tell you, even more important is the protection, not for every tenant, because Costa-Hawkins limits us, and there was some compromise about when this protection kicks in. But thousands of people will be able to retain their tenancies, because they can't be evicted without some justification or some cause. Those are real people, and real human beings. So if you're looking for perfection in this process, from any side, I would say that this is not the place to find it. And this is the way it works. And it's good. It's more than good. It helps a lot of people without killing the economic future for our city. And I wholeheartedly support it, and again, congratulate my three colleagues. Steve, for really rolling up your sleeves and sweating out the details. And for everybody who participated in a very good thing, and a very good day for Sacramento. Last thing. This is a start, as everybody says. It is a key piece, but will only be meaningful if we are serious about housing reform around production. And, you know, there's a lot of things to tackle. We start with Measure U and the bond, which I got to go back. It's not just pride, but it's absolutely important, because Measure U is not sacrosanct here. That bond, that again, Steve helped us with, is the product of Measure U. It doesn't happen. We don't have that money if we don't make a continued commitment to investing in affordable housing in, in our communities. But there's a lot of other work to do. We had a question, the fact that it's $400,000 to $500,000 of public subsidy per unit to build a, an affordable housing unit in this city, and in this state. And if we want more efficiency homes for people, we're going to have to think more strategically about how we use our precious public resources, both at the state and the local level. There's a lot of work to do. This is a great start. Let's call the roll, please, because we have very, very, vote. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneer.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Abstaining.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. That passes. Thank you very much. Good work, everybody.
We now have the, the public hearings going back to now item number 20, I believe. Correct? Madam Clerk, let's take up item 20. Let's take, we're not going to take an actual break, but let's just pause for 60 seconds here while the room clears out. Nine speakers have 22. If there's. If we could get everyone to leave quietly, please. If you would please exit quietly. We have business to continue. Thank you. Go ahead.
I think we can waive the presentation.
Item number 20 is Bruceville Apartments. Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Carr says that we can waive the presentation. Do you have anything you need to add to the record?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Carr, does that include a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Move the item.
Open and close the public hearing. Okay, I'm sorry.
Open and close the public hearing and move the item, provided there are no speakers.
That's correct. No speakers. You have about five seconds.
This is a good news story, and it's right on time. This is 351 units going in across from the light rail station at the end of the Blue Line that consumed us. We've had extensive public outreach, and the public actually made this project better. Because of the public outreach, we have EV chargers going in, and we have bike racks going in, one bike rack per unit for long-term storage, and one bike rack for every 12 units for temporary storage. These are studio apartments, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, and solely needed in our district. And this is another $40 million investment in District 8, which puts us around, somewhere around $275 million in the last three years.
Very good. Good work. I think you have a plurality of seconds, but we will go ahead and vote anyway. The item is moved and seconded. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed or abstaining? That is a unanimous vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you take us to the next item, please?
Item number 21 is the vacation of a portion of an easement for a public road and public utilities on the 13th Street and 14th.
Councilmember Carr is waiving staff presentation? I'm sorry. Councilmember Hanson, one of them is waiving.
Waive staff presentation. Open and close the public hearing and approve the item.
Okay. And if there's nothing to add, Councilmember Warren has seconded the item. No public comment?
That's correct.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Or abstaining? Thank you. Yeah, thanks to our staff for waiting. If we can move on to the next item, please.
Item number 22 is City Council Housing Authority, Arden Way Phase II Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, approval of tax, bonds, and approval of loan commitment.
We do need a presentation. I believe we have folks signed up to speak on this item as well. So if you could give us a brief overview, we'd appreciate that.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers Annickel, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The report before you request approval of a $30 million mortgage revenue bond issuance and a $4 million loan commitment for the acquisition and construction of Arden Way Phase II, which will be constructed with Arden Way Phase I. Together, the project will provide 120 affordable units. I would like to read into the record, the Tefra Resolution should be dated today, August 19, 2019, Section C of the background. Stuff's available to answering questions, may I have?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We are going to take public comment, if that's okay with my colleagues?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I have 10 speakers signed up to speak.
10 speakers. We're going to see who's left here from waited through that last long bit. Thank you very much. When we call your names, please come forward.
Arturo Vasquez is the applicant, then Lisa Huff, Mary Jane Jaganozki, and then Chris Jensen.
Arturo here. I'm sorry, just one second. Councilmember Carr had a question. All of these folks, I'm sorry, did I say Carr again? I'm stuck on Councilmember Carr all night long. Sorry. All right. We're checking to see if there's anyone here opposing.
None of the speaker slips indicate that they're opposed.
Okay. Can you punch up there, Councilmember Warren?
Am I?
I'm still up there.
I'm so.
Go ahead, Councilmember Warren.
Yeah, if not, I'd like to, I'd like to waive the presentation. I think our community has had multiple meetings. We had a meeting just a couple of weeks ago. We had 40 people come out. Everybody loved the project. There is a small contingent of people in the community adjacent that have expressed some concerns, but I think most. and a $4 million loan commitment for the acquisition and construction of Arden Way Phase II, which will be constructed with Arden Way Phase I. Together, the project will provide 120 affordable units. I would like to read into the record, the Tepro Resolution should be dated today, August 15, 2019, Section C of the background. Stuff's available to answering questions may have.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We are going to take public comment, if that's okay with my colleagues?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I have 10 speakers signed up to speak.
10 speakers. We're gonna see who's left here from waited through that last long bit. Thank you very much. When we call your names, please come forward.
Arturo Vasquez is the applicant, then Lisa Huff, Mary Jane Jaganozki, and then Chris Jensen. Arturo here. I'm sorry, just one second. Councilmember Carr had a question. All of these folks... I'm sorry, did I say Carr again? I'm stuck on Councilmember Carr all night long. Sorry. We're checking to see if there's anyone here opposing. None of the speaker slips indicate that they're opposed.
Okay. Can you push up there, Councilmember Warren?
Am I?
I'm still up there.
I'm so...
Go ahead, Councilmember Warren.
Yeah, if not, I'd like to... I'd like to waive the presentation. I think our community has had multiple meetings. We had a meeting just a couple weeks ago. We had 40 people come out. Everybody loved the project. There is a small contingent of people in the community adjacent that have expressed some concerns, but I think most of those concerns were alleviated at the last meeting. And so I love the project. I think it's in line with what we talked about earlier, and I'm prepared to move the staff's recommendation.
Open and close the hearing?
I'd like to open and close the public hearing, move staff's recommendations.
Okay.
Okay. Moved and seconded. However, Councilmember Harris does have a comment. You're just gonna have to press your mic up.
Yeah, I do. You know, I misspoke in the last item and said this was passed on consent. It was not passed on consent, and it looks like it has a pretty good future right now. This is a great project. Thank you to Community Housing Works for being willing to come and do good work in Sacramento. This is a much-needed project. Thank you, SHRA, for working out some financing here, and I will definitely be in favor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No one opposed. Are you okay to waive your comments, those in favor? Yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate you. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Councilmember Warren. Madam Clerk. We will move on to council comments, questions, ideas, AB 123 reports, and JP Board and Commission appointments. Anybody... Okay, Councilmember Carr, you are up.
Thank you, very briefly. We had a community meeting last night at Genesis Church, and I'm gonna pass out to you what I gave to the constituents of District 8 who came to that meeting, and we're gonna put it on the board. And what I'm asking is that the Law and Legislation Committee take up drafting an ordinance which would prohibit homeless shelters within 1,000 feet of a school, playground, or community center. And I would also ask that our city manager bring back a modification to our legislative platform that would do the same, encouraging the state to pass such an ordinance. And so the... Displayed on the overhead... Not displayed on the overhead. What you will get in the packet is that letter as well as a picture. And I'm gonna wait until she passes it out so you can see. Oh, you can put the picture up, Matthew. The first one. The picture you see on the top is a ball field, and right on third base, right to the right of the third baseline is where a homeless shelter has been proposed. And on the bottom picture, you can see where the shelter at Railroad Avenue was located. And on the other picture, you will see a street view of the houses that are right across the street from that location. And also on the bottom, you will see a street view of the railroad shelter. I just wanted to make sure the whole council was informed as to what we were doing. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I just... I wanna make sure I get this correct, so I wanna ask Ms. Halkin to come up. I have a request of the city manager. When we looked at potential shelters, I forget, two months ago or so, almost three months ago, the presentation including tier... included Tier 1 and Tier 2 shelters. Tier 1 shelter was downtown in Ethan Way. Tier 2 shelters was in the South area and Broadway Corridor, whatever. We've had 16 different names for that, but WX Corridor and Broadway. What I'd like to do is get back on the agenda, because I know we've had some challenges with Ethan Way around state, the state, but agendize for our discussion and action Tier 2 shelters and do that on August 27th, so we can come back and do that. We have a significant problem, as you know. We have a crisis, and if we don't take action soon on these things, we will miss another turn, and I don't think that's acceptable for our community. So is that... And I know there's some other pieces that you all wanna bring back, which I would just delegate that to you and the city manager of other discussions that we should be having around some of the other repurpose shelters that we have, so we can do that at the same time.
Let me... If I wanna follow up on that, I support Councilmember Chenier's motion, and I understand we... Councilmember Carr and I hosted a lengthy and difficult community meeting last evening, and I understand that we do have a difference of opinion here, and that's okay. What all I want is to bring this question of the South SAC shelter to the city council with the recommendation of the site that we talked about last night, to the city council for the same vote on August 27th. And I will engage with Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, and Councilmember Chenier specifically around the South area, you know, and around all the issues around the South area, and continue to work, continue to work very closely with them to try to address and alleviate all their concerns about site, about conditions, about mitigation. But I would like this back as well for a vote on the 27th, and here's why. As I said last night, this problem, and Jay said it a minute ago, this problem is not getting any better with us doing nothing. I'm not being sarcastic, Councilmember Carr, but if you would like to bring back, add as a potential action item, busing all the homeless from South Sacramento to Camp Sacramento, as you suggested last night, I'm very happy to have...
That's not what I suggested.
Okay.
That is not what I suggested.
Okay. Really?
Yes, really.
Okay. I must have misunderstood. But, okay, we can... You're welcome to bring back any alternative than that you would like, but this needs to be discussed by the city council and ultimately decided. And again, I'm open to working with you to address any of the concerns. And I'll say this again publicly. If there is a better site that is actually viable, that can be identified within the next couple of days, so that we're not churning this over again and again, I'm completely open to that. But we have a limited amount of money, and there are real criteria around a site being actually ready to be able to put either a sprung shelter or other form of shelter on that. So I'm willing to continue to engage over the next two weeks if there's a different way. This is the site that the city staff, not me, the city staff has identified as the only site in the South area, other than that light rail site, the RT site, that is viable. If there's anything else, I'm completely... I am completely open. I'll do the right thing by the community, by the city, and by this most pressing issue, which is not getting better on its own.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't wanna go to get into this, but since you brought it up, I have to...
Well, you started.
Have to clear this up.
Okay.
What I suggested was that we establish sort of like a Betty Ford Clinic for those people who were really severely either addicted to a substance or had some serious mental problems, that we could get them away from the causes of their addiction. We learned from Railroad Avenue that people were camping across the street, drug dealing to the people who were in the shelter. And I don't know how you get better if you're constantly exposed to the drug that made you addicted anyway. So Camp Sacramento was a site that we own. We can get them away, those people who want help. We can get them away, isolate them, and help them get off of their addiction before we bring them back.
And I'm...
And I know how to bus them. I'm from the South. I grew up in the South in the 50s and the 60s. I know how to bus.
Okay. I'll... I've got a last word here. I'm just invite you to bring any proposal that you would like before the city council on citing this subject on the 27th of August. But I wanna call some questions here. They must be called if we're going to... If we're actually going to get thousands of people off our streets.
So the Tier 1 was the Capitol Park Hotel and Ethan Way. Tier 2 was the Broadway site and the South Sacramento site.
Lauren was part of it as well.
Lauren was part of it as well, but we've walked away from that.
And the hearing was based on availability of funding.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Word, Mr. Mayor.
And if... I think this is an opportunity for council comments, and I'd like the city attorney, unless I'm correct, I've been correct, this is an item that needs to be agendized if we wanna have a further detailed discussion.
And that's all we're at. That's the request, to agendize the item.
I'm just recognizing your request that August 27th was...
Thank you.
So there were additional sites.
Yeah. All I wanna know is what you're requesting Tier 2 sites. I just wanted to know the list of the Tier 2.
South Sacramento and Broadway.
Just the two.
Well, and then they have... I'm requesting that they come back. There's some...
That's all there is on the Tier 2 list, is 2.
Also in the Tier 2 were a couple of non-sighted programs, a scattered site shelter and a couple of other things, and we can revisit our... the progress we've made on those.
We're just defining what I'm asking.
All we're asking... All I need to know is what he's asking. He said Tier 2. I don't... Maybe you guys all have better memories than me. I don't remember what we labeled 2.
I said Broadway, the Broadway WX Corridor site.
Yeah. And the South SAC site, and then the two other...
And then there's some...
Some non-sighted programs were included.
Okay, okay, okay.
I get it. We're done.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. You're giving me a heart attack, so.
Okay. We don't wanna do that.
Howard, I'd like that proposal to come back at the same time.
Yeah.
For the legislative platform. I have no confidence. Anything is gonna come out of Law &amp; Ledge. So if we could bring the legislative platform back.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I would just say, for somebody who often talks about process, and you just sort of insulted the process, Mr. Carr, I just take... I would encourage us to use our processes to build trust and commodity amongst us, rather than saying that you don't believe if the members of Law &amp; Ledge don't like something, that you'll never see it, which isn't the truth. We often have things that come out of Law &amp; Ledge that we don't support and come to the council as a whole. So I just... Given your comment earlier that you didn't have a chance to read the ordinance from Thursday to today, I think we have plenty of time to work on this.
Well, we will put it on our law, and Ledge log, and I will let you know when it will appear.
Okay. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna change the subject. So I actually have a couple of announcements to make, although I would say this. I have an awful lot to say about homelessness and sheltering, and I look forward to the opportunity, but it's not today. Gardenland's Northgate Neighborhood Association is meeting this Thursday, 8:15, 6:30 p.m. at Stanford Settlement. By the way, I'd like to make an announcement. We had a retirement party for Sister Jean Felion, 43 years of service to the community. She's been the executive director of Stanford Settlement for 43 years. Talk about commitment. The woman is a dynamo, and we wish her all success in retirement and a very, very happy life. She's done a heck of a lot for Gardenland Northgate. Anyway, RPNA is meeting this Thursday, 8:15, 7:30, Fremont Presbyterian Church, Room E210, 5770 Carlson Drive. And Station 15, Fire Station 15, will have their second annual open house this Saturday, 8:17, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at 1640 West El Camino. Mr. City Manager, I have a request for you as well. I've got some parking issues in D-3, largely centered around the student housing that we're trying to build. So this is in a formerly industrial area, and we're bringing a lot of fairly dense student housing to the area. And as you can imagine, that affects the parking scenario. So in the past, we created a pilot program around educational institutions where there could be restricted parking, but an overlay of permits for people to be able to use that parking. I spoke to Mr. Ironman about it. We went and toured the area. So here's what I'd like you to bring back. I'd like to direct you to bring before Law &amp; Ledge a creative and flexible solution that allows the city to initiate an on-street employee permit pilot program. Specifically, I'm talking about the 65th and Elvis area, because it's deeply impacted, but it could apply to other areas of the city as we change our housing options. So the pilot should have a low impact to surrounding business and residents, but assist in the proper utilization and management of our parking assets. Now, that was a pretty technical sentence, and you can be sure that Mr. Ironman helped me craft it. So I will provide that to you.
Sounds about right.
And I look forward to bringing this to Law &amp; Ledge, because we need to find a solution for some of our businesses that need to remain in that area.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Jennings.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So August 27th, it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty busy day. And I think that would be the appropriate time to bring the safe parking lot proposal to the full council, the work that's being done by District 7. So I just wanna make sure that that's the time to do that and add that onto the agenda for the city manager to be able to add that on to that agenda for us to take a look at the results of what we've seen in San Diego, what we've seen in San Jose, what we have seen in LA at that time. So just wanna get that on the agenda. And then on a couple of announcements for District 7, Thursday, August 15th, City Hall in your neighborhood, in case you don't wanna come all the way downtown, we'll bring it right to your neighborhood. It's gonna be at the Robbie Waters Library at 6 p.m. on Thursday, August 15th. Also, on Friday, August 16th, at 5 o'clock, we'll have our monthly trucks and such with all the greatest food in Sacramento. We also, on that day, have a flag rugby and soccer clinic for kids age 3 and up. And we're gonna finish off the night with a movie night, which will happen at dusk, How to Train Your Dragon: The Hidden World. We have an incredible parks commissioner in District 7 by the name of Devin Lovell, and he has cleanups for our parks. He's just been doing a great job of cleaning up our parks and making sure that they're prepared for our families to be able to enjoy them. So that's gonna take place on Saturday, August 24th, from 9 to 1 p.m. at Charter Point Park. We need volunteers, and we will provide the equipment and a light lunch for anybody that's coming out. So we encourage you to come on out and support us as we clean up our parks, one of the most important amenities that we have in the city of Sacramento. And that's it.
Okay. Councilmember, was it Gueda? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. One quick announcement here, and then a couple things for the city manager. Number one, District 6 Movie Night at Tahoe Park will be along with the Food Truck Movie Night. So we'll have food trucks during the day and then stay for the movie. On Friday, August 23rd, The Incredibles 2 will be showing. So come out and enjoy the free popcorn in the late evening, but join us in fellowship with neighbors before that. One item for the city manager for the Law &amp; Legislation log, number one, if you could bring back an item, amending the Stockton Boulevard Special Planning District to include additional restricted uses that do not comply with our commercial corridor goals, such as car washes and mini storages. And then if you could also add to the Law &amp; Legislation log, the development of a special planning district for Folsom Boulevard, beginning from Howe Avenue to Watt Avenue on Folsom Boulevard in that commercial corridor. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Warren.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of comments. One, I just wanted to make the announcement that the city of Sacramento and the community of Del Paso Heights lost one of the true pioneers and champions of our community in Ms. Ruth Davis. You all... Mr. Mayor, you have... You've seen her at the Capitol. You've presented her with accommodations before. You know her son very well. He's Mr. Lambert Davis that does the cheesecakes in our community. And so we're gonna make a special push to really honor them and the family and really try to help with some of the... in some of the ways that we can help with the cheesecake business. But also, I just want to, for the city manager and also for the mayor, I know this has been... And maybe Councilman Harris as well, this has been... You know, I've heard a lot from various people about this property on Evergreen. Mr. City Manager, I'm gonna ask that you permanently take off consideration of Evergreen site for any homeless property. And... But I do have an alternative site that I think is much better and will be much more accommodating, and I'm prepared... I think is much better, and will be much more accommodating, and I'm prepared to bring it forward, as I had mentioned before, once my colleagues step forward as well with additional sites. But, you know, I get tired of going to community meetings and people saying that, well, the city is still trying to push this homeless shelter on Evergreen, and I am not supportive of it, I will not be supportive of it, and we have another site that I believe is much more suitable and will do an even better job at speaking to the issues that you've championed, Mr. Mayor, and I want to be a, a partner in that, and so-
Care to say what it is?
We, we can have a discussion about it, and, and in fact, I suggest that we do it in about 15 or 20 minutes, and we'll have a discussion about it. But I do want to, for the record, Mr. City Manager, I would like to not hear any more discussions about this Evergreen site, because it is very confusing to our community, and when we have these community meetings, I get bombarded with questions about what people are saying about it, and yet I have no, I have no knowledge of, of a lot of this stuff, and so I'm standing there left to defend it, and, and, and I'm tired of doing it, and so, but I do want to bring my site forward just as quickly as some of my other colleagues step up. We will have a very robust site that will be very accommodating in District 2. Thank you very much.
Two things, I know, I don't want to give Suzanne, our city attorney, another heart attack here, but I do think some, just, I want to put out my opinion, not voting on anything, we're not doing anything. First of all, Councilmember Harris, I know we're going to talk 15 minute, Warren, and I respect your point of view. In my view, let's not take anything off the table until we know what, all the sites that we are talking about. Okay, that's one, but secondly, regarding Ever-
We should probably wait, we should probably wait, Mr. Mayor, because this is going to go in a different direction, and I think you need to hear me-
Okay.
But we also made a commitment to this community when we did Railroad and some of the other stuff, and I'm not, I'm not going back, I'm not going back on-
No triage, I understand, okay, no triage, but, okay. We, we have to talk about it more, go ahead. Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Suzanne has given me a panic look. So I would like to say that, that is, again, a discussion that needs to be had at a later date, perhaps, you know, from the dais, and I certainly am in disagreement with what was just said, and so we'll have to get into it at a later time.
Very good, that was definitely within the rules. Okay. Good. Okay, Cap, Mr. Chan, go ahead.
No, no, I have one quick item. So the 27th is going to be a very busy evening, I'm adding something to the agenda as well. So given the discussion on 5G in our community and the significant concerns expressed, we've undertaken some activities to, to address these concerns. Now, this is, this is good. So we've completed testing all of the 28, five, 4G and 5G sites in the Pocket Greenhaven area, and to determine if they're operating within the FCC guidelines. We've completed that, and we're in the process of finalizing a contract. In fact, I just learned that we finalized the contract, to bring an expert forward to review the testing results and validate the sites that we've tested. We're targeting the 27th to bring that forward to have the discussion here at council, and part of that is so that we can have it publicly this way, and we could refer the, the public and those that are interested in 5G and have the concerns, hear from this expert, and we can point to this, this hearing in terms of providing information on the safety of 5G, so.
Thank you.
Within the Brown Act, very good. Okay. There's nothing else?
Mr. Mayor, I have eight speakers.
Oh, we do have eight speakers, right, and I'm going to have to excuse myself.
Thank you. I have eight speakers for public comments for matters not on the agenda. The first is Robert Copeland, then Mac Worthy, then Jade Nicole.
Mayor Steinberg, you should be ashamed of yourself by pushing that right to shelter plan of yours. It's got more holes than Swiss cheese. Go run like a coward. I mean, I'm not going for this guy. If he wants to act like a coward, run.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
No, he's out of order.
You want to talk to the council?
Okay, earlier, when you was talking about the shelter on the railroad, South area, you were acting like a bunch of two-year-olds. I mean, is this a city council or a playground? You people make me disgusted. Every time I want to speak on something, Mayor Steinberg decides to run, and I'm sick of it. I don't care if I get kicked out or not tonight, you people made me disgusted. And this, Jen Island 23 just passed tonight, be careful what you wish for, you just may get it. We're going to fight hard for real rent control, and as far as Capital Park Hotel, Sacramento Tenement Street is really looking at that. We don't like what's going on. What are you going to do with the people in that property now? Mayor Steinberg made me disgusted tonight, run like a coward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Jade Nicole, then Chris Jensen.
Good evening, Mr. Worthy.
Well, I'm not, because I hear too much shit. Carr, I heard about the meeting, you're in the right track, stay there, you just need the neighborhood to support you with a lawyer, that's all you need. See, what we have to hear, the, the housing shelters is a trick. There is no law that that person had to stay in that housing. There's no law that person had to stay in that housing.
You may continue, Mr. Worthy.
Put me some minutes back on that. You took him talking over here, talking over there, but anyway, like the Deppas Heights, they follow in my lead. Not no shelter on that. There's other places for shelters on, to be. Down here, you got commercial buildings down here. Why put that shelter over there in the rail yard at that expense? Because you go classify who going to be in that one, and classify who going to be in the ones that get it done there. It's a, it's a turmoil. You have gathered enough money on those folks' backs to build 10 homeless shelters. They pimp them, that's what we talk about pimping, the mayor have pimped the homeless people for that money. And I'm waiting till some things come down that we're going to really have to talk about. Ain't nothing about employment in that area, we know you can't employ, just because you got no control, Robbie Waters didn't got control of seven, that being, we know that's the kind of police department. But now, Deppas Heights, Oak Park is pitiful, all they talk about is libraries, nobody said who took Oak Park's library, this, Matt George Law School. Joe Soonus is the guy that sold Oak Park to be mine. We can't even find an attorney here. Both attorneys left here, where did they go? To Bethesda. Is that where they only can get a job? Because they're underpaid here. Those are the things you do-
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Worthy, your time is complete. My next speaker is Jade Nicole, then Chris Jensen, then Chris Greeney, then Carly Brannan. I don't see Jade. Chris Jensen, Chris Greeney, then Carly Brannan. I think you're up, Carly. Following Carly is Gregory Glavvenovich, and then Robert, or Lambert Davis.
Good evening.
I'm just going to start by correcting something that was said earlier. I forget whether it was Mindy or Daryl, but one of them very flippantly said, oh, we've had two hours and 15 minutes of speakers. But by my count, the time that elapsed between 2:50 and 4:45 is one hour and 55 minutes, which is 20 minutes less than what you said, so just want to correct that. Earlier, Daryl talked about the use of our precious local resources, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about right now. On July 29th, I received word that there was a large police presence in Meadowview, so being the concerned citizen that I am, I went out there to see what was happening. This was at the Meadowview Glen Apartments. There was a man visiting the apartment complex who had a bench warrant, which, if anybody in here doesn't know what a bench warrant is, it's typically for a failure to appear. They brought out, SAC PD brought out, two tanks, had an officer in a turret on top of the tank with the gun pointed at the person's door. There was, in addition to the two tanks, there were two tactical vehicles, SWAT was out there, there was a robot that blew up the person's door. That is excessive, and when he came out, he came out with his hands up, they then shot him with the beanbag gun, tased him, and after he was immobilized on the ground, they sicced the K-9 unit on him, and the K-9 bit down and then shook after biting, biting him. So when we have come in, time after time after time, to talk about the use of force policy and using less lethal force, we didn't mean use every single type of less lethal force on the same person, especially-
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Gregory Glavvenovich, then Lambert Davis.
It's clear that none of you have our best interests in mind.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Many, many different places in Sacramento, if you go to an intersection, for instance, Keith and Rockbridge, you'll see that there's one corner that will tell you what the two streets are that intersect. I think that each of the four corners should have a sign telling you the two names of the streets that are intersecting, it would give people a job putting those signs up, and we wouldn't waste our time looking at four different corners to find out where we are. Second topic, world peace. If people would realize that people, you know, follows, the Torah, the Bible is a composite of four different gods, Anunnaki gods, if people realized that the Mormons, the Muslims, Moses talked to somebody in a spaceship, Jesus ascended to heaven in a spaceship, if they all, if we realized that all these religions were started by Anunnaki, we would have world peace. All religions have origins of Anunnaki gods, and as far as your, you people talking about housing today, I talked to a geologist at SAC State, her name is Carlson, which is the street that comes into SAC State. She has the most successful textbook for introductory geology in the nation. I told her, we shouldn't be building homes in Sacramento, this is farmland, we should build homes up in the rocky foothills, and she said, the reason why Sacramento exists is because anywhere you drill, there's water, if you try to get water up in the foothills, you can't get it.
Thank you for your comments, Madam Clerk.
Last speaker is Lambert Davis, but I don't see Lambert here, so I have no more speakers.
Does that conclude our business for today?
It does, thank you.
We're adjourned at 6:05 PM.